Councilmember Bokey, would you like to do an audio check before we get started this evening?
Test, test, test.
Hello?
Sure. Yeah, let's do that.
You want to do it to the whole, right? Group of the whole?
Yeah. What's that?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's study session for this Monday, March 25, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order, and the first item of business is a point of, not personal privilege, but shall we say executive privilege for the city manager to introduce one of our newest employees.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Bokey somewhere out there. It's my pleasure. I'd like to introduce you to Jeff Remack. Jeff started work today, first day. He is our new Community and Economic Development Director. He joins us from Kitsap County where he had served for over five years as their Director of Community and Economic Development, and actually prior to that spent almost 25 years with Kitsap County. So he's got a very distinguished career working in a number of areas within community and economic development. But I know you'll be seeing a lot of him in the very near future at upcoming study sessions and regular meetings, but I did want to have an opportunity for you at least to be able to put a name to a face. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to him if he'd like to say a few words. Jeff?
Fabulous. Welcome.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. I appreciate coming on board. I would have had some more to say except for I think the city manager just took everything that I would have kind of spoken about myself a little bit.
You'll get used to it.
Yeah. No, I really am excited to be in Lakewood and that growth and development there really is. So the tide of the military. City manager didn't mention I've been in the Navy Reserve for 26 years, going on 27th here in August. So this will be one of the spots where I can actually continue that military service and serving the community once I retire because I am coming up on that soon. Thank you for a chance to speak.
Absolutely. I'm sure we'll get to know all of us together with you over the course of the next several years.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Well, tonight we have three significant items for discussion, and actually four items for discussion. The first is the review of the Human Services Strategies and Funding Recommendations with our Human Services Committee. And if Shannon, she here? There she is. Shannon, come on up. Shannon Bennett is our Human Services Coordinator. And so she'll come and bring forth members of the committee if they'd like to join us up here. Have them introduce themselves, and then we'll look forward to chatting about the work plan. And sorry if the microphone sounds tinny, but it's a little loud, at least on my end. I don't know how it is out there. Not too bad? Not too loud out there for you guys? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. I am Shannon Bennett. I'm the Human Services Coordinator here at the City of Lakewood, and I'm just going to sit here in support of our Community Services Advisory Board Chair, Kyle Franklin, who will give our presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. My name is Kyle Franklin, and I serve as the Chair for the Community Services Advisory Board. I currently live in Lakewood and have served this board for two years, and I've been chairing it for about two months now. As a professional fundraiser for MultiCare Health System, I work so that members of our communities have access to a variety of services, ranging from primary specialty care, behavioral health resources, and even programs that encourage healthy living and nutrition as prevention mechanisms for chronic disease. As such, I understand how human service grants provide a safety net and support services for members of our community. With me tonight is Michael Akadi, who also serves on the Community Services Advisory Board. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and share our recommendations for human services funding and changes to the current application process. We are excited to provide our recommendations for the 2025-2026 Human Services Funding Cycle. Tonight, we will review the items in your packet. We will highlight the currently funded programs and how they support our recommended strategies, go over the chart that shows the last 10 years of funding, review the 2025 and 26 Human Services Application and Rating Tool, and present our recommendations for expenditure of the opioid settlement funds and a timeline for managing the application process. The first attachment is on page eight in the packet. This is a summary of the 21 programs funded with the Human Services Funds during the 2023-24 budget years. I want to remind council that the Human Services Grants have historically funded programs, not just agencies. We review the value and benefits associated with each program to ensure that they align with one of five funding strategies. They are emotional support and youth programs, access to food, access to health and behavioral health, housing assistance, and other crisis stabilization services. The next attachment on page nine is a summary of the total human services funding provided over the last 10 years. This list is organized by strategy. You can see that we have had the right partners who have used the funds appropriately and provided a benefit to our community. The Community Services Advisory Board is recommending that we continue using these five strategy areas. Are there any questions on the strategies or the current list of programs that are funded?
Yeah, in the packet, actually, the way. Yeah, in the agenda packet, it's numerically a little different from what you have in paper, hard copy. Thank you, Kyle, for the overview. Any questions of the strategies by members of the council? I think this is a consistent approach we've had for several years, and I think that builds some stability to the organizations, at least from the city's funding.
All right. Well, then the next documents to review are the updated application and rating documents, starting on page 10. The application is the same one used for the previous biennium, which was previously edited to include questions about the organization's dedication to equity and inclusion for the benefit of the communities and peoples they serve. The application also clarified what information applicants needed to include. This made it easier for applicants to successfully complete applications without much need for follow-up. Additionally, the rating tool was edited to ensure that scores best reflected the effectiveness or expected outcomes of a proposal. Finally, an applicant workshop will be provided to agencies to help understand the funding strategies, questions, rating tools, and process so that every agency has the best chance of submitting a successful application. Are there any questions on the application materials?
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thanks for being here and doing all this. And I apologize for not being at the meeting where you discussed this, but there are a couple of things I just wanted to clarify so that I understand what we're asking people on the application. And to begin with, there's a question of asking whether this is a new or existing program. And and I guess my question is, what, from what perspective are you asking them to check a box? From their perspective, or from whether it is a previously funded, existing program funded in Lakewood or not? Because there's no explanation there, and there could be someone that has a program that they have been operating for a while, but they want to apply for Lakewood funding. And the question is, are they a new program for the purposes of this application, or are they an existing program? That seems unclear.
Sure. We're asking them if the program is new to them or something they've been administering long-term. I think just kind of idea of, is this something you already have experience having run? Is it going to take you a little time to get up and running with it if it's a new program?
So it's not reference to whether it's previously funded by us?
Correct.
Their history with the program.
Correct.
And there was a comment there about there were the priorities for programs that had a budget of less than a million. Can you go into why an agency that has a overall budget of a million dollars or $2 million would have a program that we would view as not help to Lakewood?
That question, I think, we want to make sure that we are helping individuals that, well, who, I don't, that maybe need more help. Some of the smaller shops that, or excuse me, agencies that might really need, be able to use our help and have a smaller budget so that our money really does contribute positively to their ability to run the program. That's not to say we don't consider those individuals with the million-dollar budget or more. It's just we, as a board, kind of like to look at that and take that into consideration when we're looking at who we'd fund. But we also, on the back end, do find out, you know, have another question that says, if you do not receive our funds, would you still be able to administer your program, right? So we don't want to throw funds forward to people that would not be able to, may not have sufficient funds to successfully administer their program. I hope that may answer your question.
So essentially, it's a balance between we want to make sure that our limited contribution is, can be impactful.
Correct. Yes.
But enough so that they'll actually focus on us.
Correct.
Okay. And then we have the question here about is your organization committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion? What really are you looking for? First of all, are you expecting anyone to answer no? And how would you evaluate the myriad of answers that in this day and age people give to you in that kind of a question to help you make a decision about doing that? And then do you envision holding people to what they say in that particular question?
So first off, no, we don't expect people to say no. The best example that I can give in terms of how the rubber meets the road in that sense is that we have many food organizations that provide food to communities, and a lot of them are looking now to do, be culturally sensitive in terms of ensuring that food they are providing to particular communities matches their traditional diet or is sensitive to restrictions within their traditional diet or religious restrictions and that sort of thing. So it is definitely an issue of being aware of of the diversity of people they serve and being prepared to address those differences as much as possible.
Okay. And then in the end, at the end of the budget section, you have a thing, a yes-no question that says, if you are not funded the requested amount, would you still be able to provide your services? And, but there's not a block for description. You know, in other words, you're not leaving it open to someone to say, well, even if we don't get any money, we're going to do some things in Lakewood, but this is how it would be more limited than if we got some money to do that. And I guess I would suggest that you give them a chance to explain that to be able to go and do that. That may help you in your decisions of whether to partially fund someone and would cause them to give a chance to consider, how can we still serve Lakewood? Do we, how much, you know, to be able to go and do that? I mean, I'm quite honestly, I I'd be less likely to view positively someone that says, if you don't give us no money, we're not coming. Whereas to say, you know, we want to serve you, but if you give us some money, we can enhance how we serve you. But let them describe that would be of value to do that.
If I could address, and we will be interviewing all of our applicants that make it through just to make sure they have everything that's needed to move forward with the members' review. We will be reviewing those applicants, and at that moment, we can certainly give them the opportunity to explain themselves. And I can also include, maybe a possible, we can discuss in our next CSAB meeting, maybe a possible narrative section provided.
My thought is, if you let them think about it more deliberately than a yes-no question, that way, then if you ask them that just at an interview, they're not trying to answer it off the top of their head, but they've given it some thought. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
On the DEI question 4C, I think on page 19 of the packet, Mr. Brandstetter was referring to. Where it starts with the question is, it's kind of the yes-no. It might be better phrased, how does your organization demonstrate a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion to those served, something like that? And that way, it kind of wraps both of the questions you have into one, as opposed to a leading question that they're going to say, of course we do. You know, how does your organization demonstrate a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion to those served, or whatever? That might be a little bit more effective. Any other questions on the form of the application from members of the council? Anything else on your end?
Yeah, we have two more pieces regarding the opioid settlement funds. We, the council is, or I'm sorry, the board has familiarized ourselves, familiarized ourselves with the origin requirements and allowable spending strategies laid out. These are about 36 pages worth of allowable strategies. In considering the limited availability of local information for how these funds can most effectively be spent, we unanimously agreed to hold on to the 2022 to 2025 funds in an anticipated amount of $235,000 as indicated in the opioid funding table located on page 25 in the packet. We further plan to gather more information on community need and seek one to two significant and impactful programs by issuing a request for proposal in 2025 or 2026. To develop the RFP scope of work and ensure that CSAB is best prepared to bring the best possible project options to the council, members unanimously agree to issue a request for qualifications in the spring of 2024 and hire a community needs consultant to gather community feedback and data while simultaneously having the youth council gather the youth voice. The information received will be used to develop the scope of work when inviting the community to submit their program bids in the coming years. So do you have any questions on the opioid settlement funds?
Before I open the questions, I just want to provide a comment. Ms. Bennett, Mr. Brandstetter, myself were at the opioid countywide sort of conference last week. It was really well done. And, you know, while they're looking at regional strategies and we're looking at localized applications and strategies, there may be some benefit in culling whatever data they have. So you don't necessarily have to hire someone to give you those tidbits of information. You may still have to do that with somebody, but it looks like they're generating a lot of information for the benefit of the county and the various cities within the county. Questions on that, though? And I think that's a good plan, from my perspective, good plan of tack. Sure, Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for presenting. I'll be meeting with the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council later this week, and I'll relay that information for what we're doing to them. So this is really appropriate timing for us to be able to do that. So thank you.
We anticipate having a busy workload this summer to, in support of seeking your approval for the funding recommendations in the fall and issuing service contracts in December. The 2025-26 Human Services Application will be released in June. An applicant workshop will be held in July, and applications will be reviewed in August. During September and October, we will interview applicants and deliberate prior to presenting our funding recommendations to you in November. We recommend using the attached application form with possible modifications, as suggested by you, to facilitate the Human Services Grant Program, $25,000 max per grant program. Agencies can apply for more than one grant, maintaining the two-year funding cycle, utilizing the five current funding strategies to determine community need and programs, and to hold on to the 2022 to 2025 opioid settlement funds to support a more targeted and impactful set of programs in, starting in 2025, 2026.
I personally think that sounds excellent. Good work on putting it all together, and the materials were well thought out and organized and thorough. So thank you for that. Any comments, questions? Mr. Brandstetter, I see your light on.
Well, I would just commend the community there for developing a closer working relationship with the youth council, which has been something that we would like to see and that the youth would like to see. And so I think that that is, you know, really possible. And if, and particularly to the part of that board, and several of us did have a chance to go to the presentation of a series of short videos that dealt with how the youth see, and were trying to communicate to their peers how to exist within the the environment of the opioid academic to take care of themselves. And it came across as that the young people can really think impactfully about that, but at the same time, think differently than those of us from another generations about what would be valuable to do that because the one of the statistics that the county has about, you know, of the some 700 people last year who died from opioid addictions, a significant percentage of them were young people. And so, and young people are like everyone else. They if you constantly go after them with an idea of saying, you need to do this, that, you know, it doesn't resonate as well as if they're talking with each other and say, we need to do this. And it goes on. So again, I commend the fact that the good working relationship that you referenced and that you have with your youth council liaisons and the youth council as a whole. Yeah, I think bodes well, not just for working with the opioid funds, but working in the other five areas as well.
Mr. Bokey, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to express my appreciation. I, we were looking forward to getting a path forward on the opioid settlement monies. And I and I think you've created that path forward. It's a very deliberate path forward. But I but I do think that all the entities receiving funds probably nationwide are are trying to figure out, you know, those thirty six pages, what is going to work best for their community. So I I appreciate you guys doing the heavy lifting for us as a council and and for the for the citizens of this city that you're you're being very deliberate, you're you're planning this, but you really have scheduled out a path forward. And I look forward to seeing those ideas and those RFPs come forward to the council to to hopefully make a big difference in in the lives of people because it it really is a scourge. Thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say that the student voice has some information that would probably be real helpful with you as well. They had a showing at the theater last week, and they talked a lot about Yeah.
Yeah, I might just echo that comment as well as Mr. Branseter. And I think we were, some of us were at the presentation that Clover Park School District was able to put on through a five thousand dollar grant, I think it was provided by the Department of Health or the county. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but as Mr. Branseter indicated, it's so heartwarming to see youth figuring out the way to articulate to their peers the importance of the topic, right, and the awareness of the topic. Because the thing that is, I think, humbling about it is the whole issue of opioid addiction is one thing, but fentanyl overdose is that and more. And of the seven hundred people that died, it wasn't necessarily from just addiction, it was poisoning. And I attended one of the funerals for one of those kids who was a twenty six year old engaged to be married in November and got some laced with fentanyl and died of, you know, fentanyl poisoning in September. And his fiancee found him, you know, in his apartment. It knows no boundaries of economics, social status, race, creed, religion, orientation. It is a bad thing. And the fact that we're going to be able to utilize these funds to help people in our community directly, I think is just a wonderful thing. So thank you for your work on that and listening to the student voice as Mr. Branseter and Deputy Mayor indicated. I think it's going to be a step in the right direction. I hope, we all hope. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll have a review of the fiscal year twenty twenty four Home and Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And for this, we'll call in our program manager, Mr. Jeff Gumm. Always good to see you at least once a year, Mr. Gumm, maybe even twice.
There we go. I do try and show up here every once in a while on a regular basis, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So tonight I am here to review a memo before you whose purpose is threefold. First, to review CDPG and home annual action plan, the process, the funding recommendations moving forward. It's also going to update council on the upcoming five-year consolidated plan process that will start in twenty twenty five as well as updating losses, financial budget for their twenty five units of development in on the Gravity Lake property. So as as you're all aware, the the city has been a CDPG entitlement since the year two thousand. So we receive CDPG funds directly on an annual basis. We're also a member of the Home Consortium with City of Tacoma, so we receive home funds. We have done so since the year two thousand. Home funds go directly to the City of Tacoma. Tacoma is the lead agency for those funds, and we run our programs through the City of Tacoma and through various programs that are various rules for the programs that are managed by the Tacoma Community Redevelopment Authority. So there's a couple of processes that that we're going through now, and we continue to kind of go through every year. So CDPG has as as a two-step process. So every five years, we have to put together a consolidated plan. We're currently under the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty four consolidated plan. It expires on June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. The new one starts on July first of twenty twenty five. So the the other process that happens inside the five-year plan, so the five-year plan identifies kind of the the big strategic five-year goals, where where we're going, what we're going to spend funds on, what we're going to accomplish over that five-year period. And then each and every year within that, we drill down to what's called the annual action plan. And the annual action plan in this case is year, right now, we're currently operating under year four. What we're looking at right now is part of the memo is year five, the final year of that plan. So the the five-year plan that expires will have the very last year, which is what we're looking for, the annual action plan of July first twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five funding. And again, as I mentioned, when when we're going through this process, we're kind of looking back and we're kind of looking forward. So we're 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 seeing what we've done over the the five-year period. We're looking at what remains to be accomplished to make sure that we meet all those five-year goals. And in your agenda packet on page eleven, I believe it is, thirty one, sorry, I don't know, I said eleven. There's a a chart that shows the five-year annual action, sorry, five-year goals and what's accomplished as part of the annual action plans within those. So primarily, there's three goals that remain yet to be accomplished. Most of them, and I will explain, I mean, some of them, you see, there's a hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred percent that we've accomplished goals. I mean, there was a little thing that you're all aware of, and we had the COVID pandemic. And when we were putting the five-year plan together, we couldn't have anticipated the the amount of funds that were coming from the federal government. So we received CARES Act, we received CDPG CV funds, there was ARPA funds, I mean, all kinds of different things and different programs. So it kind of skewed our five-year goals. So we've we've exceeded a bunch of them by an exceptional amount, and that's because of those additional funds that came through. And and some of that additional funding and additional programs took staff time kind of away from what we would traditionally be doing and directed it into these other programs so we could so we could expend those funds and meet those goals of those acts.
While you're on that page, I was curious about the homelessness prevention and persons actually impacted positively, I assume, the five hundred and fifty three despite the number proposed of fifty, which is fantastic. But anecdotally, what kinds of things were done to prevent, reduce homelessness for those five hundred and fifty three people?
So those five hundred and fifty three were primarily rent subsidies. So we were looking to pay back due rent, deposits, utility bills that were unpaid, things, things to keep people in their home immediately or.
See that up above under tenant-based rental assistance as well. Is it one of the same or a little bit different?
They were fairly similar, so just different funding sources. So the tenant-based rental assistance was primarily the the CDPG CV three funds. And the other funding would have been a bunch of the different ARPA funds and some of the other CDPG funds that we've accomplished over the years. And and when you look at that table, the the three goals that are are kind of still outstanding would be homeowner housing units rehabilitated, we proposed fifty, we finished twenty four. And these goals only go through fiscal year twenty twenty three. So they don't actually include kind of where where we're at right now. We haven't plugged those numbers in. There's a a goal under homeowner rehabilit, sorry, homeowner renter housing added. We had a goal of thirty units. We've completed one. And then public infrastructure, we proposed twenty five thousand seven hundred and seventy five, and we only serve five thousand three hundred and forty five to date. And I can kind of bring you up to speed with where we are and why those numbers are the way they are. So the the homeowner housing units rehabilitated, we will exceed our goal of fifty units at the end of the five-year cycle. So right now, we have rebuilding together South Sound, who's doing a renovation renovation program for some some low-income individuals, and they're fairly small projects. We anticipate they'll finish probably twelve, ten to twelve by the end of the year as well as the city's major home repair programs. So right now, we're we're remodeling homeowners homes that are low income. We do all kinds of things for them, and we anticipate we'll finish about eight of those. So that gets us to forty four units. Yeah. And then as part of the proposed funding for twenty twenty four to kind of complete that cycle, we would again fund major home repair and a a new program Habitat for Humanity's Aging in Place Program. They would they would look to serve disabled households, elderly households that we would not directly serve with the major home repair. So it would it would meet those those homeowners that we can't quite quite serve and 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 take care of them and and get them what they need in their house so they can live in their house comfortably. With those two programs funded in twenty twenty four, we anticipate we would get to the fifty two to fifty four, fifty five range. So we would meet the five-year goal for units rehabilitated. The goal of thirty units with homeowner rental housing added, again, we we started with thirty, and that was based on losses, construction of the twenty five units as well as Habitat doing, they were originally going to do twelve houses in the Tillicum neighborhood. They're now doing eight in the Tillicum neighborhood for us. And those are mostly done. There was four, four and a half done last time I went out there, which was two or three weeks ago. So they're they're coming along. They anticipate having all of their projects done this year. So all of those eight will be added. So we'll have nine. And then the twenty five units is, as as you all know, putting affordable housing takes a while. I mean, it to get a budget put together to figure out how to how to fund it, to go out to bid and get it done and actually construct it is, it takes a while. It takes even longer during COVID, unfortunately. So we do anticipate that that program, losses, development of twenty five units of affordable housing will be finished in twenty five, twenty six, somewhere in there. Probably near the very end of twenty five is kind of what they're looking at. It's they're getting close to going out to bid. So we're working with the some of the project managers and so forth right now. And then the other would would be public infrastructure. So we were originally slated to serve almost twenty six thousand. And though there was two projects that we were doing, there was the street, the sidewalk improvements on Phillips Road, and then there was street lighting in the Oak Brook neighborhood. And the street lighting project was was canceled. There were some issues with outreach and so forth. So we decided not to to move forward with that project. That was canceled. And we did proceed and finish the street improvements along Phillips. So we were able to serve one of those projects and at this point, as as we'll go through the proposed funding allocations, there isn't a proposal to fund infrastructure for twenty twenty five only because the typical lift on an infrastructure project takes a while to get going. We don't have any proposed projects out there that I can necessarily identify as as a low-income neighborhood. Typically, when the city puts its its six-year tip program and so forth together, there's only a few projects that that right now are qualifying for for CDPG funding. They have to be in a in a low-income neighborhood. So fifty two, sorry, fifty one percent or more AMI households in that block group. And it has to be primarily residential. So it it's kind of limited over the over the what have we been around? So twelve years, thirteen years, we've been doing CDPG in home. We've we've been able to to tackle a lot of the projects that that kind of are out there to the low-hanging fruit, if you will. We we built a lot of streets in in communities where there were schools. We built a lot of sidewalks where there weren't there for kids to get there, a lot of street lighting. And a lot of those projects have kind of been kind of been taken care of. So there's less and less infrastructure projects. I do anticipate in the next five-year cycle, probably, I don't know if it'll be right at the start of it, but at some point in time, those projects are probably going to come back, and we'll end up with more and more of them as Lakewood does more infill sidewalks in some of the low-income neighborhoods. Because we have, as you all know, we've got a bunch of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, don't have infrastructure improvements. So as as we go in and do those in the future, I anticipate those will all come in and in greater numbers in the future. So right now, we have an approved budget for transportation in HUD. It was approved about a week ago, a week and a half ago. And I haven't seen the numbers come through HUD yet. They usually take a couple of weeks, sometimes a month. I I did see the the proposed budget as as it was run through or the approved budget. So CDPG actually remained the same. It was the same allocation as the year before. So I would propose we're looking to get about five hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, which is less than last. The only reason that I would say is as CDPG goes on, anticipate we'll have more this year. So for home, getting about a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar allocation, which is a fifteen percent increase from last year, we received here. And the the funding was reduced about two hundred and fifty million dollars, which is pretty close to fifty. I do anticipate those numbers to go down. So based on that, in the agenda packet, again, on three, there's a a funding and table five would be home funding as proposed. These are our proposals in line to meet, push ourselves over the the finish line. So funded with two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty four CD as well as a hundred thousand dollars in program income. So a total of three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. The program income is major home repair program income. So when we loan funds to homeowners, they pay us back. And when they mature, we we end up getting those funds back. And doing this, we're we're in this for twenty two years now. So we've got actual loans that are maturing, and we're starting to get paid back now. So. Housing emergency assistance for displaced residents is the EADR program. It's proposed to be funded at twenty four thousand dollars with fiscal year twenty twenty four CDPG funds. There's a proposal to fund, as I mentioned, a new a new a new group, not necessarily a new group, but a new program, Habitat for Humanity, their Aging in Place Program was a proposal for sixty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty four CDPG funds. Services would be funded for CDPG Emergency Payments Program. This would be year three of the Emergency Payments Program. It's it's been a very successful program. We've used it for all kinds of things, paying, again, paying lots of of back due utilities, bills, rent assistance. We've been able, we we don't necessarily pay ongoing rent assistance. What we do is we help people that are either homeless or going to be homeless if they're they're being evicted, and we we help them to relocate to another place. So we're able to pay their deposits and their first and last and and keep them in a in a place and moving into a new new residence. There's a a proposal for CDPG Administration of Home Housing Services for ten thousand dollars. And this program, it it basically just funds our administrative side of the the home program. And in a year where we're working with LASSA to build a a fairly large complex, these funds will go fairly quickly. The other the other part of our home admin funds you'll see in the table below go to the City of Tacoma as part of the ten percent allocation. For CDPG, we're also looking at a hundred and seven thousand dollars in administration. This is twenty percent.
Mr. Mayor has a quick question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, how do you identify the citizens that need to help, that the the ones that you are providing help for, the people that are unable to do that? Or how do you identify that?
So there's there's a couple of different ways. So the the emergency assistance for displaced residents, that's a program where we identify them internally. And most often, those are either the fire department is closing a building that's had a fire. The building department has posted something unsafe to occupy. So we go to help those people. Sometimes the Red Cross is there, and then there's a bunch of different organizations for the for EADR, it's it's primarily internal. So foreclosures that we're responsible for, let's say, the health department closes it for sewer failures or septic failures, those types of things. For the Emergency Payments Program, there's kind of some internal and and some external. So I work a lot with Pierce County Housing Authority. I work a little bit with Tacoma Housing Authority. LASSA is involved and a few other providers where they've got tenants who are either homeless, they've been homeless. We're working with a lady now that Pierce County Housing Authority recommended to us, and she's been homeless for four and a half months now, living in her car with her two kids. So there's a there's a lot of referrals. And and some of it is is the City of Lakewood. If if we're closing a building down, some of these tenants have utility bills that are keeping them from getting into a new place. So they've got water and power and some of these things that they haven't paid. And with the EADR program, we don't pay back utility bills. So it's another source that we can help pay for some of those things to keep them in there. So it's it's the one program is is all internal, and EADR is kind of a mix of of providers and the City of Lakewood as well.
If we, someone approached me, I could refer them to you to see if they were qualified. Can that, is that a method?
Yeah, yeah, we we actually, I I get a lot of calls from from, hey, my neighbor, you helped my neighbor, and here's what's going on. So we we do get a lot of that.
Thank you.
The final thing on the CDPG chart on on table five would be. The final thing on the CDBG chart on, on table five would be NSP administrate, or sorry, NSP abatement program. So the only funding that we anticipate back, and this is, this is just something that I'm, I'm projecting, we, we look to get about two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of funds back. And that's just a projection of funds that are outstanding for the NSB one program, because I don't necessarily know when we're going to get them back. So I just every year look at what's outstanding and, and propose that to be paid back, so we may get those and we may not. Hard to tell on abatement funds, whenever, whenever a property sells is when we get paid back or it goes to foreclosure at year three, so.
How much do we have outstanding on the Gravel Lake Drive building that was the fire loss, that's like six hundred thousand or something?
Six hundred, it's either six hundred and forty-seven or six hundred and seventy-four, I, I can't remember, it's just, just over six hundred thousand.
Any idea when that might get repaid, is there any progress on either selling or?
We've actually had a bunch of people that have called that are interested in buying the property. There, that most of the people have wanted to kind of under- understand the process and figure out what, what they could potentially not pay and what they could pay. So there's, there's been some, I don't know, concern about having to pay six hundred and forty-two thousand or whatever our number is back to us. And still make the property viable and, and obviously that's a concern for somebody developing the property. But I do know, I do know there's additional interest in that property still, so. I, I anticipate we'll get those funds back probably within the next year and a half, two years, hopefully, hopefully in full. One thing on a, on a separate note, we have to always, always celebrate our wins. When we did the abatement for Car One Mobile Home Park, we spent about one point, almost one point one million dollars on that project. And we were repaid in full plus interest about two weeks ago.
Great.
It's nice to get one point one million dollars back in a fund.
Yeah, in the abatement fund.
Yes.
That's great.
Yes.
So you have plenty of targets of opportunity.
Unfortunately, we do have some other projects that we need to work on, so. So that is the, the proposal for CDBG, it's a five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar twenty twenty-four allocation that, that I believe we'll be getting is what we're proposing. Program income would be three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for a total of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The home program is a, a program.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry there, Mr. Bokey, we didn't see him, thank you.
Before we get, before we get too far and onto the next subject, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Mr. Gum. Lot of work for a million dollars and I, and I don't want to sound like too much of a government employee, but that, that's a lot of stuff and a lot of people impacted. I, I am interested to know more about the, and, and I don't want, and, and if it's out of order. Or it's going to take too long, let, let me know, but that, that, the Habitat for Humanity Aging in Place Program. How does this differ from the home building program that they're very well-known for, for all these years? That, that, is it just in the Tillicum neighborhood? What kind of income levels are we looking at and, and how does the, how do the repairs differ? From what we would do in our programs or what the county does through energy assistance?
They're all good questions and I, I'm remiss that I did not, did not discuss that, being a new program, good, good question, so. The program would be a little different than major, actually be quite a bit different than major home repair, what we're already doing, so. And it would be different from their house construction, so they're proposing, and they have done this program, I believe, for five or six years now. So they're proposing to serve elderly and disabled households primarily, fifty percent or below AMI. They, they could potentially take them up, our, our CDBG program allows you to take somebody up to eighty percent AMI. But they're looking to serve some of the lower-income populations more so, so the thirty percent and fifty percent populations. And their program is designed to, to make small repairs, so they're, they're not going to be doing the, the large-scale work that we're doing. They would be doing ramps, they'd be doing bathroom improvements if, if someone's got a, a roof that's leaking in a, in a manufactured home. So, uh, uh, much of their work has been done in manufactured homes versus single-family homes and a lot of it in the past has been done in the Tillicum neighborhood. Not to say that that's going to be a, an area where they have to do it in the future, but primarily elderly, disabled, very low income. And, and small repairs, something that, that we, we don't look to do with our major home repair program. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a nice program, it's going to be something out there that, that we don't really have. Available for our citizens to access, it's, it's an easy thing for somebody who's owned their own home and, and needs. A bunch of things done and we can loan them sixty thousand dollars versus somebody who's in a, in a mobile home park who's just renting the space. And, and doesn't really have the equity, so it, it's, we've never been able to help those manufactured home people. And this is a program that, that would kind of look to do that, not necessarily exclusively, but it would be a focus for Habitat to do. So that's my.
Thank you, do they have, do they have other sources? I mean, clearly, they, they've started this program, do they, are they braiding sources like ours into this program? Do they get other sources of funding?
Yeah, they, I think they started the program originally, it was with shop funds or with some other funds, it's, they have a fairly small pool of funds. I, I would have to get the exact number, but it's, it's not a, it's not a large amount of funding that they have. And it's, the, the thing that, that would be nice with this program is it would be a program where they get their funds back. And they continue to use them again and again and again for similar programs, so they would loan them out at zero percent interest and just, in essence, start a revolving loan fund. For the City of Lakewood for these repairs down the road.
Is that how it works or, or are these just one, do they take lanes?
That is, that is how, I don't know if they take a lien on the property necessarily, I do know they have promissory notes that they, that they secure their loans with. I don't know that they're doing deed of trust for, for manufactured homes and so forth.
Well, I, I think it's great, I think it's great news, I mean, it's good, good news for everybody involved that there's. Another source of funding, because of course for Lakewood, y- you know, for so long that, that the city council has been supportive of. Putting money into home rehab, you've been at the, you've been on the front lines of that for a long, long time now. Because we're a built-out city for the most part and, and so preservation of existing housing is just so, so important. So I, I think this is one of the, even though it's a small program, this is really good news for us, I think. That going forward and our, our support for the, for the, the major home repair and whatnot, I think is, is all good news. And I'm glad we're, we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, it, it does continue a partnership with Habitat for Humanity, who's been really good for the last ten years working with us, so.
Was a challenge for something like that, as you get a couple of roofs and an HVAC system and you're loaning through the sixty grand.
Yeah.
Maybe one house, maybe two.
Correct. Yeah, so I, I don't believe they're going to, they're going to keep their programs fairly small. They, they typically are in the one to five thousand dollar limits, so they're, they're going to be able to do at least the way that, that they, they told us that we were going to do the program. They're going to serve at least eight house, households, potentially up to twelve, so they're going to be much smaller loan programs. So for home funding, table five shows, there's, there's two things funding. One would be the Administration for Tacoma and that goes every year as part of our agreement to the City of Tacoma. And then an Affordable Housing Fund would be funded in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Previous year's program income was sixty-eight, seven fifty-four, ninety-one, so a total of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. Would go to the Affordable Housing Fund and the Affordable Housing Fund is just a, a basically a big catch-all loan pool. That we use for any affordable housing projects that come along that need funding and typically it's, it's, it's kept for two or three years. And then it's allocated to a project so we can actually have an impact, it's hard to, hard to do much with three hundred thousand dollars. Table six kind of talks about where we're going now and lays out the timeline moving forward through May fifteenth, when we submit this to HUD. So kind of where we're at with big, big things coming up would be March twenty-ninth, April twenty-ninth, there's a thirty-day comment period on the. Proposed draft twenty twenty-four annual action plan, April fifteenth is a public hearing before council on that annual action plan. At the same time Tacoma is doing these things, so there's some, there's some dates in that that talk about Tacoma's public hearings and so forth. And then on May sixth, it's set to come back to you all at city council for adoption and then submitted to HUD on May fifteenth. So with this twenty twenty-four year, or sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual action plan, staff is proposing, we're, we're going to continue to focus. With this annual action plan on primarily housing-related activities. So there's the Habitat program, internal housing-related programs would kind of be the, the focus as well as some of the displaced, emergency displacement funding programs. As this moves forward, council can alter these funding recommendations when it comes back. You can, you can change them, we can change funding allocations, there's, there's a, a, a number of things that can be done. Again, there's a thirty-day public comment period that's upcoming, once we, we get all of our comments back through. Staff will bring them to council, there's the April fifteenth public hearing before you all. I can let you know, so far, the comments received, we've had comments about. Affordable housing construction, we've received a couple of comments for down payment assistance programs. And multiple comments for either financial education or financial literacy and homebuyers classes. So those were, and, and one of the, one of the comments was about youth, so see if we can teach youth. Financial literacy at a, at an earlier age in college and so forth. And then myself and my staff have, we receive daily comments for tenant-based rental assistance. So I would say ten to twelve calls a day on tenant-based rental assistance for people looking for assistance. So those are, those are the things that, that we'll be looking to, to bring back to council as we come back and talk about it. So the, the second part of the memo is, is updating you on where we're going with the next year's five-year plan cycle. So as I mentioned, the five-year current plan, or sorry, the current five-year plan expires this June, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we're looking to start the next five-year cycle right after that, we're going to look to hire a consultant in, in the July timeframe. With a, a contract executed and, and get started realistically in September, we'll, we'll start doing some of the public hearing and outreach. October through March is kind of when all that is done, so there's a, there's a huge lift on going out to the public and providers. The, the fire departments, different agencies, the housing authorities, Tacoma, Pierce County, kind of, kind of everybody, the state. Getting input on what we would like to focus on or what the public would like to focus on and bring that back to council. We're going to probably bring a, a number of iterations of this to you all, it'll, there'll be bits and pieces, because it's a. Probably, it'll end up being a eighty or ninety-page document, so we'll bring sections back to you at a time, probably send them through the city manager so you can review them. Like to have a, a review of the process, bring the consultant in either in December, January, some, something like that. To kind of go through the, the process, what we're doing, how it's going, what it entails and, and what we're hearing so far. Do that at the start of, of twenty twenty-five and from that point forward, we would, we'd get together, draft the consolidated plan. Put the draft together, bring it back, again, it's going to be the same cycle as it is this year, so we're going to be looking at the April, month of April would be the five-year. Or sorry, the thirty-day comment period on the five-year plan and the twenty twenty-five annual action plan approval again at the end of May and then moving forward. So there'll be a, a lot of time for council to get involved in the, the next five-year cycle and, and that's, that's kind of a big deal, because clearly it's going to drive where we're going, so. And the final thing in the memo is the update on Lhasa Gravel Lake Common Project, so. We did receive a message from Congresswoman Strickland's office that they were funded at one million dollars, so that was part of the mini bus package, it was just approved. I did just see an email today where they, they confirmed that they're looking to do some sort of a, a media campaign down the road. When loss is a little further along and has some, some milestones to kind of call out and, and get out there in the public's eyes, so. Right now, we're working on getting the environmental review done for the property, so that's a, probably take about thirty days. Get the, all of the funding commitments in place, signed and done. We're working with the, the other funding agencies, so the state has a bunch of monies in this, there's, with the million dollars from the, the feds. There's now twelve and a half million dollars in the project, so we're looking at final budgets, kind of seeing where they're at, do they really need all these funds anymore? They were originally looking at ten and a half million dollars. So, correct, so if they don't, if they don't need the funds, I have a feeling their budget's going to be a little more than ten and a half million dollars based on construction. But I don't think it's going to be twelve and a half, so if that's the case, we'll, we'll figure out what they don't need for funding. The county, it may be a proportional reduction where the county says, okay, if we're giving you three million dollars, our proportion is this much back and, and the city's. Red- reducing theirs proportionally, so that's kind of what, what I think would probably happen.
We'd have to know sooner than later on the ARP funds, right, so we can reprogram?
Yes, so the, we're actually looking at budgets, or sorry, the, the proposals going out and we should know the budgets probably within the next. Sixty to ninety days, somewhere in that ballpark, they're going to, they're going to get their budgets out, their budget, their proposal out to get. Actual bids from contractors, see where we're at, so it's, goes from being fun and easy to a whole lot of work.
Yeah, I'm sure. And it's going to be fully funded for construction, right, they don't have to get funding, financing?
It is, it's wholly funded for everything, the nice thing is, is a majority of those funds are grants, so it's a, it's a project that when it's done, we'll, we'll kind of. Put Lhasa in a different position financially where they're able to hopefully grow and, and. Become larger and.
Mr. Mayor? Like Habitat for Humanity, for instance, and some of these other organizations. Over the past like five or ten years and, and that sort of then affordable, you know, they provided more funds for elderly. Staying in the home and, and some of these other, kind of building the same number of affordable.
For the most part, they've stayed fairly consistent, is building houses and they're really good at it, so I mean, they've, they've kind of stuck with that, proved. Financial counselor, so they've done that, they're starting to do a little more of that, they've done a little bit more in the way of some of these rehab programs, but they're, they're fairly small. So I mean, their, their thing that they still, that's probably going to be that way inevitably for that, so I mean, it's, it's great that they do that and. West, I don't remember when they did it, maybe three or four years ago, a land trust model house, they, they're, they're given a certain appreciation. I think the rest is, is left in the property house and it, it does make it more affordable, so they've, they've changed as land prices go up. It's, it's just kind of making affordable housing impossible right now.
Mr. Gum, I had a question on a couple of things and the, the, it's, it's, you know. Working on a plan for the last, last for year five of a five-year plan. Tinkering with the metrics and the goals and, and, and things that we're going to do, I, I. It, it causes me the, the goal accomplishment, there's a couple of them that are. Probably accurate to describe what the impact of CDBG dollars, but that. Be hard to explain to the community, uh, you know, for instance, a homeowner renter housing one. Well, we know there's one, you know, in the past four years, that, it, it just that CDBG in one. Or how it is, but there are, we have blended CDBG funding with other funds. And Lhasa is an example of where that's not the only city money that went into these projects to do that. And so as we look ahead into the next five-year plan. We should consider in terms of strategies so that the impact of CDBG funds. Recognizes a greater percentage of the overall housing growth in the community to be able to go and do that. Because I kind of have to, i- i- explain to people that would, would, would look at this, that, well, there's really. Six hundred, not, not just one, but that, the, the kinds of city dollars that were used were. Different color to, to go off and do that. The other thing is, is that I would, I would venture to say that, you know, that first of all, I'm a little bit surprised about the. The number of. Persons, uh, you know, the, 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 that were, that were looked at on the public infrastructure improvements. You know, we, yeah, originally, we were going to put in streetlights in. You know, you know, ab- about a twenty percent of, of Oakbrook. Because the twenty percent that was eligible for CDBG dollars to be able to go and do that and. Still surprisingly to me, the, the residents in that neighborhood. And in fact, it was the residents in the portion of that neighborhood that were not low-income that didn't want streetlights. And so that's when we decided to shift and we used the same money that we would have used for streetlights, we used them for the sidewalks on Phillips. which essentially ended up serving the same neighborhood because it's immediately adjacent to it and a greater neighborhood because it, it, it connected more, more of a book to do that. So I was um kind of, the goal seems twenty five thousand seems strange to me. But at the same time, the, the actual number of five thousands, one seems high, the other seems low, given that the deputy mayor benefits from the sidewalks on Phillips Road because it improved not only the sidewalk, but the road that she takes to get to get home and people walk from well within Oak Brook to get to there to be able to do that using the the Onyx sidewalk pattern to get to Phillips Road and, and move on off. Uh I would say that we need to look at it. But that if in the next five years, we could consider a little bit more about not siloing CDBG but mixing CDBG with some other city funding forces as we did with, with Lhasa. We will can show, I think better outcomes where we're uh not, not, not the total funder of things to be able to go and do that. I had a question about the program income dollars that are reflected in on table six, I guess it is. Um that um and, and, and the footnote says that they're uh the prior year's dollars. And, and the prior year's dollars are the, the prior year isn't over with. I mean, we're in the prior year still now. And, and, and you mentioned that last week we got, you know, that, that things come in. So is that number going to change or is that a planning number that was decided upon based it's what we have in hand already? And so any more money that came in later this program year will just roll into the next five year plan? Or is that number going to fluctuate based on any, any actual returns that come in between now and the end of June?
I would say both of what you said is true, only because HUD changed how they did things about two years ago. So CDBG program income, we're anticipating program income to come in. And yes, it's, we're still in this year, so we don't know what it's going to be. So CDBG, we're, we're predicting that we're going to get this amount of funds into this coming year. With home, two years ago, there was so much fluctuation in home funding and program income, they couldn't figure out really how it was working. So they changed how they report program income. So CDBG, CDBG reports the current year and future and, and home reports what we got last year. So they, they look at actually, in this case, we're doing twenty twenty four. So they look at twenty twenty two program year income, the year that's actually closed. So in twenty twenty three, that program income will be considered in twenty twenty five. So I don't know why they decided, but they made two different rules. Now it's fun.
So this, in a, in, in their home, the sixty eight, seven fifty four and change is money that already been received prior to now, but it, but, but, but there was a, an accounting year that it was received in that causes it to be applied into the year that starts in Ju- July of twenty twenty four.
Correct. It's received.
And, and it'll go on off. Okay. I wouldn't have guessed that from the footnote. You know, that, that, it, it, it's, it's, it would, it would have been easier to say to, to put some dates or something of when it was received, but that, that is going on. Um that on the Lhasa project, when we talk about the that, did we use some home funds or some funds from your family of funds to buy the land that the project is going to be on? And is that included in the twelve point five?
The city did not for phase one. Um we allocated, I'm trying to, the, the one house in our, in our thirty year or in our thirty years that were thirty houses that were looking for affordable housing was, was purchased with CDBG funds. So, and sorry, home funds. There was six hundred thousand dollars that we allocated in fiscal year two thousand and twenty two to purchase eighty nine sixty six Gravely Lake Drive. So that's the last little single family on the corner on Gravely Lake. So phase one, uh where they're actually doing the twenty five units is going to include a property that was funded through the twenty, was it twenty sixty? That was twenty sixty funding through cap, through the Pierce County, the affordable housing, the recordings funds. So we were able to I, I won't say that, that we weren't instrumental in, in getting them, but we were able to kind of point out, hey, remember Lakewood, we're over here and, and we come back every once in a while. So we're able to to kind of get the county on our side and, and able to fund Lhasa to acquire one of those parcels. It was about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um the fourth parcel that Lhasa has there that they're going to develop is one that they purchased on their own without any government funding at all. So there's a little bit of kind of everything in their land right now.
So when, when the Lhasa project is built, that uh it's going to be twenty five new units of of, of housing. Do, how do we account for the housing that they tear down to build it? Do, do, is our net twenty twenty two or twenty three, or do we just take credit for twenty five and, and, and forget about the fact that raised three or four?
But with CDBG, we get credit for how many we build, no, how many, no matter how many we demolish. So they are going to demolish two. Um there's two single family houses that they're going to take down. And, and what CDBG and home do is they make you do a replacement. So if you're tearing an affordable house down, you have to replace it with something similar. So a three bedroom house, they can replace with a three bedroom apartment. I think the other house is two bedroom house. They can replace with a two bedroom apartment. But we do get the benefit of saying, yes, we, we created twenty five, even though we demolished two.
Okay. And before I get too wrapped up upon the, you know, goals and meeting them uh to, to do that, um if we don't meet goals, do we get demerits and does it affect future funding? Or is it all just internally Ferrari evaluating how well we're doing?
It's, there isn't a, we don't get sent to the principal's office if we don't meet our goals, but we should be making reasonable accommodation to meet those goals. I mean, what, what HUD looks at is they, they look at it kind of over a, a cycle. I mean, if, if, if you've been fairly consistent, things happen. You report, part of our, our year end reporting is what's, what's changed in your goals and why haven't you met your goals? So every year there's, there's kind of some give and take and, and they anticipate there's not, there's going to be changes. You're not always going to meet all those goals. What, what they don't want to see is, is a plan that has just goals that are kind of shot in the dark and, and you're nowhere near. Cause then it, then it's going to kind of signal, hey, are, are you guys actually paying attention? Do you know what you're doing? Or are you planning accordingly? I mean, it's the, the purpose of the five year plan is to actually understand the citizens' needs and the, and the development for housing and, and community development, the city, what you should be doing. And if you're completely off, it's kind of a, kind of a red flag for HUD, but there is no, no penalty for not meeting those goals.
Okay. Well, we'll, 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 if, 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 if you should not meet too many goals, we'll leave the city manager to determine penalties. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a seed I'd like to plant. I've got to remember the parks board here. I've got you with the CDBG thing. So one of the concerns I have sometimes is doing the same thing and expecting different outcomes. I think what you have planned is appropriate for where we are. Uh but I also a little bit have a little shrug grin about no funding for physical or infrastructure improvements. Not due to what you brought to us, but because we haven't thought outside the box as much. Let me give you an example. The city of Yelm has a thing called the Yelm City Park. First public park in the center, please, piece of Yelm. Park stays busy entertaining families year round, hosting many community wide events. The park has received several improvements over the last few years, including the new playground equipment, splash pad, et cetera, et cetera. The splash pad located in Yelm City Park is the most popular family attraction in the community with water fountains, jet rings, other features for children to cool off in the summer heat. The splash pad was funded in part through a three hundred and five thousand community development block grant fund and a state capital budget grant. I throw that out there to say beyond twenty twenty five, and as we go to the next item uh on tonight's agenda, the community survey findings, one of the findings was we have not done a good job in healthy uh activities for the community, healthy community activities. We've got great parks, but we lack some of these things. And we've talked about these kinds of infrastructure improvements forever. And it's always been either a lack of funding, a lack of will, a lack of dream building, or whatever it is on our part. And I just want to plant the seed that these funds are well intentioned, well invested. I think the plan meets the needs that the council articulated. But maybe for the next cycle in twenty six, twenty seven down the road, it's time to think bigger. And it's time to look at the feedback on the survey findings that we're going to hear about shortly from Mr. Vargas. And actually think about funding infrastructure improvements that are not just one shot for one year, like the rental assistance program, well meaning, but that you could throw a million dollars a year at that and it would be gone like that. You fund some infrastructure improvements, they'll last for a decade and they'll serve this community for a lot longer than a one year shot, in my opinion. So again, the conversation for another time, but I think it's time to think bigger on some of these items and what we can do uh to really make an impact long term. So that's my soapbox. Any other comments on that? Or anything else Mr. Gum brought up? Vito?
Oh, we'll, we'll embrace you later. Yeah. Yes, sir. The only thing I would say regarding parks, the, the last projects that we did for parks would have been, uh we did skateboard improvements um years ago at Terry Todd.
Years.
And we did, yeah, we did some dock improvements um at the lake out on, eh, off of eighty four.
Right.
So we've done some park improvement. Early on, we did a lot of park improvements and there was, there was a lot of benefit into those neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, it's, it's something that's kind of been, been missed over the last probably five to seven years. We haven't, we haven't done that.
Yeah, the cycles, it's time to turn the cycle a little bit again. Good work has been done. Absolutely. We don't want to diminish the good work and investment here, but maybe it's time to, to think a little bit more broadly now. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gum? Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Why don't we take a five minute recess here before we have Mr. Vargas come up for the review of the twenty twenty four national community survey findings? So we'll go ahead and just recess for five minutes. Okay, I think we're ready to go. If Mr. Bokey has come back yet? Still out there somewhere? Muted and hidden. Okay, Mr. Vargas, we are here to review the twenty twenty four national community survey findings with the four hundred and some odd folks out of sixty six thousand in the city. So it's a significant results. But we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Council members, good evening. Michael Vargas here to review our community satisfaction survey for twenty twenty four. And if you'd like to follow along in your packet, I am on page two seventy four and I'll be going over the presentation portion here. So to begin, this is our fourth year of surveying with the, with Polco, a national research center since twenty fifteen. The previous survey years being twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty seventeen and twenty fifteen. And um one of the key features of the survey is that Polco works in communities all over the country. Um so they So they compiled over three hundred community survey results, which allows us to compare our results with national benchmarks, if you will. And so a focus of the results analysis this year, as it was in twenty twenty two, is equity. I think it's important to really ground ourselves in how the city council codified equity, which I delineated here within the city council goal of robust and active community. Equity is also codified in the city council's statement on equity back in twenty twenty one and that we are committed to identifying and eliminating systemic racism. And key features of that would be in ensuring equity municipal planning and identifying and dismantling preconceived prejudices. So as you, as you've seen in the equity focus of the analysis in breaking down the results by BIPOC, Indigenous and people of color compared to white respondents, that is to serve in identifying any sort of racial disparities. And really that is to begin discussion about those. As in the next slide that I have, in creating the equity insights, they propose possible explanations for the differences we've seen in the survey results. But really, alternative, alternative explanations may apply. And really, the point of the equity analysis is to really start discussions about this and identify areas for future inquiry as well. So with that, let's get into the nuts and bolts of the survey. The community survey measures livability across ten categories. And I think what really sets it apart is that it also, not only does it look at city services, such as public safety and parks and recreation, but it also looks at how the respondents think about their community as a whole, as a Lakewood community. And so we see measurements in the realms of inclusivity and engagement, health and wellness as well. So the survey recipient map, this slide has a lot of key data here. I'll break down. To begin, let's go back to twenty twenty two. After the end of that survey, the city council had really two direction, two points of direction to implement this time around. The first one being, we would like to hear more voices overall in the survey. And the second point is to hear more underrepresented voices, if you will. So we're talking about our BIPOC in low income communities. To the first point of more overall voices, let's turn our attention to the small table there with the red rectangle. In twenty twenty four, we doubled, more than doubled our sample size from twenty seven hundred to six thousand households this time around. That garnered a response, number of responses of four hundred and sixteen for a return rate of eight percent. So while it is the highest number of responses we have received on an NCS survey since twenty fifteen, it is our lowest return rate because it is our largest sample size to date. To speak to the second point of increasing underrepresented voices, let's turn to the bigger table here. And I'll first explain how we went about in gaining more underrepresented voice in the survey. So we decided, the survey team, to implement what is called oversampling. This is a technique in which if there's a hard, harder to reach populations, we can deploy several oversampling techniques in order to gain more of their voices. And one such technique is to say, looking at our map here, which we have geographies of police districts here, one through six. Research team said, let's ensure that each of these police districts randomly receive one thousand surveys. That is statistically sound, but also ensures that harder to reach neighborhoods in districts one, two, and three, which had the historically low response rates, and these districts contain neighborhoods such as Telecombe, Springbrook, Woodbrook, and International District, had increased number of surveys returned. And that is what is indicated through the table here, surveys returned by district both in twenty two and twenty four. We look at the top three rows here, we see districts one, two, and three. And we went from twelve percent, six percent, and two percent response rate to an increase of eighteen percent, six percent, and fourteen percent respectively. And with the number of returned surveys increased as well. While we're on this slide, I'll also describe another way we implemented more of an equity focus this time, and that is in our paper mailers. So as in previous surveys, folks received a physical copy of the survey in the mail with also instructions. But this time, we had the instructions both in English and Spanish and also provided folks the opportunity to take a survey via a QR code online, which would have a Spanish translation option as well. So that is the first time we've done so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, when, what time, what time of the year were these sent out?
Yes, I believe the timeframe this time was in November before the holiday season, at the end of November.
So, a- and what was our, what was our goal for return rate? Did we have a goal or just?
We did not set a return rate goal. Historically, we have not. So, yeah, we did not have a return rate goal.
Okay, I mean, I would love to see a lot more surveys come in. And this is probably the most important slide to me is how do we get more people returning than these surveys? And when we send them out, you know, looking at the data, you know, if we sent them out in November, when they're getting something else in the mail that they typically are looking for in November, do we have a higher turnout rate for, you know, those types of things? And how can we kind of piggyback on other events or other things where we could get, you know, larger turnout rates, you know, whether we do something at Summerfest or do something, you know, where there's lots of people coming in and out and, and really gathering these survey result, results. I think that would go a long ways. The other thing, you know, I, it's kind of like, you know, sending out stuff during the election season, you know, you want to send stuff to people that are going to return it. But you also want to hear from everyone else. So that's, that's hard to, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a balance act right there. But maybe if we're sending out letters that, you know, or things that we need to get returned, sending those to, you know, correlating out with voter data or something where you're likely to get some returns. And then thinking of other ways to get people that typically aren't going to be returning mailers to do, you know, do something else to get their results heard. So just if we can focus on that a little bit, I think that we might be able to have a lot, a lot better turnout. So just some thoughts on this slide, but I appreciate you really diving into the results and how it was done. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And along that same line, did I understand you to say that we sent a thousand surveys to each district?
Correct.
So the districts don't have identical populations. And for instance, you know, if I, if, if I look at District One, it has many less people than District Five. That, so, so it doesn't surprise me that you, you, you know, as, as a percentage of the people that are there. I mean, if, so if we look at it for future surveys, if we divide up how many surveys we're going to send to, and we don't have to divide it up between police districts, but we divide, divide it up between whatever you sort of want, want to calculate is, is targeted neighborhoods. Like maybe next time we do the central business district and the station area district and we look at some things, but we try to, you, you maybe can't divide it up into equal population blocks, but you can figure the population to decide what percentage of the surveys you should send there. And then your percentage return will, I think, will, will perhaps tell you more than what, what, what it does this time. Okay. Just kind of a, of a way to look at the data to, to, to do that for two or three years from now. When we're going to do it, whether we do it in the next biennium or another biennium.
And to that point, Councilmember Brandstad, there are different oversampling techniques we could use. The researchers recommended, because this is our first time oversampling, perhaps doing a blanket approach. But you are correct in saying, you know, if it were not for oversampling, some districts naturally have more households. So this is just a numbers game that randomly they would receive more surveys. So they suggested doing just a blanket approach this time, although we could get more tailored and more specific to increase the number of surveys in a specific area. For example, perhaps in District Two, which I believe had, well, District Three had the lowest in twenty twenty two of two percent. We could perhaps send fifteen hundred there, for example. We could get very granular in our sort of distribution, if you will. But the researcher said for the first time around, it is a recommendation that communities implement a blanket approach, especially for harder to reach communities. So.
Councilmember Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So I, I, I agree with my fellow council members. And I do think that this sample of four hundred and sixteen with comparison to our sixty three thousand population here in Lakewood, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't tell me a lot. I think one of the things that we heard or that I heard a lot from people was that they had to put in their personal information at the end of the anonymous survey. So how we take our surveys is really important. You know, anywhere from how we're putting the language in there, so it's at a certain level that everyone can understand that it's in different languages, which I know which is great. We did in Spanish. It would love to see it expanded to our top five languages for the city. I think that would be very helpful. And then some special, you know, focused ways to get to these groups that we're looking for this information of not just, here's a postcard with a QR code, go for it. And then put your personal information in it on an anonymous survey. So those are some things that I personally would like us to take a look at if and when we do this again, because I think that was a huge deterrent for people.
Thank you. So moving on to sample demographics, AKA who actually took the survey. So for this slide, I'm going to like to turn our attention to the first column here. This is our raw data, if you will, of who actually took the survey before industry standard weighting formulas were applied. In order to make our sample look more representative of our entire population, in column three actually shows using US Census data what the proportions of the various demographics are. And column two is the result of the weighting formulas. Now, weighting is applied. It is pretty industry standard for community surveys in order to gain that statistical accuracy that a ser- community survey strives for. But to look at the raw data, which I think is still important to see who actually took the survey, looking at the first column there, the unweighted column, respondents before weighting tended to be white and female, fifty five and older, living districts five and six, which include Lake City, Lakes District, Oak Brook and Stillicum, not the town, and homeowners in detached housing. So I think it's important to see who are actually reaching via curvase, current surveying techniques and communications campaigns. So that this was important to include. Moving on to the next slide here. So respondents on the survey across the ten facets of livability were asked, for example, what is the overall quality of the economy in Lakewood? What is the overall quality of public safety in Lakewood? They were also asked how important it is for the Lakewood City government to focus on a given facet over the next two years. So plotting those two data points together, we have this quality and important matrix with importance along the horizontal and quality along the vertical there. So if you were to, and each quadrant, if you will, speaks to a specific priority, if you will, with the first being facets that were low in quality yet of highest importance to respondents. And that would be public safety and the economy. The second quadrant there would be of high quality and high importance. So we're looking at utilities, natural environment with parks and recreation at the top there. The third quadrant being of high quality yet of low importance to respondents. And we're looking at health and wellness and mobility metrics. And then finally, the fourth quadrant speaks to the low quality yet low importance to the community respondents, such as inclusivity, engagement, education, arts and culture, and community design. This is an important shortcut for sort of getting a high level summary of what is important to respondents for us to focus on over the next two years and the quality of that policy area.
Mr. Brandstad?
Yeah, so in interpreting the this, this is based on the survey results.
Correct.
And so in one respect, we should feel good that there's only one area that's low quality, high importance. Is that, that's, we don't, we don't want anything in that quadrant if we can possibly possibly, possibly be there. So that, that's good. And then, but how do we interpret the low quality, low importance? By those things that are less important to people, so we should be less concerned about the quality than we, than we should be about high importance items. I'm saying, when you did your analysis, is that what you?
Have you looked at that? Yeah, so based solely on these groups of questions here, what is the quality of the facet? How important it is for us to focus on it? I would say the fourth quadrant is probably the lowest priority of the four quadrant, just because while it is low quality, folks did rate it lower in importance for us to focus on as opposed to quadrant three, which is high quality, but also low importance.
It almost seems, and I guess that would you, it's, what, what, how do you read the fact that inclusivity and engagement essentially on this chart becomes the lowest importance item? Is that how the survey results read that? You know, that, that's that's somewhat contrary to conventional wisdom in this day and age, that, 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 that people are really concerned about inclusivity and, and be able to go and do that. And, and do you, do you think that the survey really didn't ask the right kind of questions to elevate that importance or did it just pale in terms of, of more tangible things? Because that's a, that's a relatively intangible item as opposed to utilities, okay, which are very tangible. To be able to go and do that. I mean, when you were analyzing that, is that something that struck you as odd?
Sure, Councilmember Brandstad, to address the first part of your question, when looking along the horizontal axis importance, we're really talking about a percentage difference of a few points, right? So inclusivity, engagement had a seventy percent positive rating in importance, whereas education, arts and culture probably had the ballpark of like seventy three to seventy four percent. So it is quite high. All of these are quite important, if you will, seventy percent at the least amount, if you will. So we are talking about a small percentage difference. However, to, I believe, your second point in the content of the questions that were categorized as inclusivity and engagement, I believe there was quite a bit of action in terms of have ratings increased or decreased here. And we'll dive into exactly what ratings were inside of that category. But there was a single question asking about how important is this to you? Inclusivity engagement for the community, and and that was the result that we see on the matrix. But as for the group of questions, which I believe are around five or six categorized as inclusivity engagement, I think you'll find that they are actually quite important policy areas for the community, and we see some action in terms of how they fluctuate over the years, so.
Remind us, community design, how was that identified or defined? Is that zoning and land use, or is that pretty buildings? What are they talking about on that?
It's the former, perhaps a bit of the latter as well. I think the questions were how well designed is residential areas, commercial areas, that that sort of flavor. And we do have a table at the, in the appendix that has all the questions outright, so. Great, we can review that as needed, yep.
Mr. Lorsella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question on this specific matrix, is this from the raw data or the weighted data?
This is weighted.
Okay, thank you.
All the results we will see, Councilmember Lorsella, will be of the, from the weighted sample.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, let's have a look at rating increases. So because this is our fourth year within the last decade, if you will, of implementing the community survey, we have a wealth of data to look back on and compare to. So not only was there a comparison drawn between twenty twenty-four and the most recent survey in twenty twenty-two, but because we sort of have that long term picture available, also there is a comparison of twenty twenty-four to what is called the three survey average. So take the results of twenty-two, twenty seventeen, and twenty fifteen for a given rating, take the average of that. That identifies sort of long term trends in the Lakewood community as identified by the survey. And thought it was useful to also compare our current, where we're at today, with how we've done since twenty fifteen essentially on the average. So looking at this, some important sort of ratings have increased. Looking at twenty-four versus twenty-two, we have, that have increased. Our look, where we see feelings of safety, importance of parks and recreation opportunities have increased, street repairs, snow ice response, and ease of travel by public transportation. I would like to skip down to number seven and eight, which I think bundled nicely, which would be opportunities to participate in special events and also special events, the quality of those. So I think this is speaking to a policy strength that we have as a city is special event programming, and that it's also a growing policy area that we should focus on according to the survey in that number two rating there. So zooming out a bit, looking at twenty-four rating versus the three survey average, we see a different picture here. Economic health has increased. Still importance of parks and recreation opportunities, which speaks to the robustness of that area, ease of walking, street repair. But again, to skip down nine, ten, and eleven, we have opportunities to participate in social events and also to attend cultural arts, music events, and special events. So we have increased in those areas in the long term, according to the survey, comparing this year's results with the long term, three year survey average.
The survey made a differential between special events and social events?
Yes.
And so what is the difference?
I think one is meant for the city government putting on special events, and then social events could include a special event by the city government, but also perhaps something in the civic life realm, perhaps by a community center, for example, or another sort of civic life organization. I think that was the intent.
Okay, and and just on the chart. One says opportunities to participate in special events, separate from a category of special events. And on the other side, it says opportunities to participate in social events. Are those both supposed to be social or both special or?
There were separate questions for social events and special events. Yep.
So number seven is social events on this side.
I see where you're getting at here. Um, no, I think that's correct. There's opportunities to participate in, but also the quality of these special events. I think both were asked, yep. Looking at seven and eight on the left hand list. Correct, that's different, correct. That's about special events, social events, and also cultural arts and music activities, correct. Three different buckets. Related, but yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Feeling, the feeling of safety, that, was that not a question asked in any of the previous ones, or was that just not? What, how is that not on the top thirteen, I guess? It seems like that's always everyone's biggest priority is safety, so. Is that just that that it wasn't, it didn't change that much or something, or? Are you referring to, like, the rate? You know, it's number one on the twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-two. I would have expected that to be like in the top three on any sort of comparison or at the top of any list, unless it's comparing, you know, it's saying that, oh, it's it's always at a hundred percent that there's no comparison, but it looks like they're kind of comparing similar things. You're just comparing two years together versus whatever, four or five years together.
Yeah, so for feelings of safety, that specific data point refers to the overall feeling of safety. We actually saw that in the previous slide. It's the quality of feeling of, quality of public safety, if you will, is what it's getting at. But it wasn't included because the rating was not higher than the three year survey average on on which the right hand side identifies. It did not increase, if you will, compared to three year average. But it did increase when looking at last time, which was twenty twenty-two.
Gotcha, okay. So for
Yep.
Thank you. And then just to, in in looking at the survey itself, it's really a lot. And, you know, when we look at ways to to try to get more people responding, you know, I I look at question number seven, and there's like a ton of technical stuff in there that we just need to parse it down to to get people responding, you know. Once we can get a response base of ten thousand people or whatever, you know, maybe then we can expand and get some more detailed information. But I think at this point, we need to dial this thing way back and ask simple questions, you know, simplify as much as we can to get useful information. I understand that this would be great to have ten thousand people answer all, you know, a hundred and twenty of these things here. But it looks like that's not realistic. We're getting four hundred, you know, responses out of six thousand, and so. Yeah, I I would just, my biggest focus would be getting more responses. And I think, you know, how we're get them and then what goes in the survey are two of the most important things to me right now is those two items, thanks.
I'll I'll throw out something, you know, we we may or may not recall, Mr. Brandstad or Deputy Mayor Moss might recall, but it seems like we went with this organization only because they had done the prior surveys, and so we were looking at a comparison, the similar stuff that they were asking for. But I don't disagree with you that it might be time to throw the baby out with the bathwater and come up with a whole new survey for the next time on matters of importance to us from what we hear from the community and put it in simplistic terms so that more people can respond to things that are more important to them, so we get feedback that can help drive policy changes, because, and we'll go through the data, and I'm not minimizing the work that you've done or the survey too much, but certainly not the work you've done. But four hundred and some odd responses, to me, doesn't help me move the needle in my own mind a whole lot, but that's just me.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with what Mayor is saying, and I would also like to add that we would like to look at the timing, and I think we've brought that up a little bit. So if it coincides with a lot of our summer and spring events where we could get out, and that's just a different layer besides the postcard that people get, I don't know if we're going out to different service organizations, those types of things, how we could work with the schools better. I think that that's another venue to look at some areas. But I do think the timing of the year is is pretty important.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah. So looking at rating decreases and ratings that were similar, so sort of packaged those two categories in this table here. When looking at twenty-four ratings versus twenty-two ratings, we saw fifty-three ratings decrease and seventy-nine that were similar. When we zoom out, twenty-four versus the three survey average, we see thirty-two rating decreases and ninety-three were similar. I think that is to say that comparing twenty-two and twenty-four results, because at the time in twenty-four, it actually had been five years since we've done a community day survey, which the one before that was in twenty seventeen. So twenty-two, twenty-two may be a bit of an outlier. So having this graphic here showing that if we zoom out, we're actually faring better in a lot of aspects over the long term, if you will, since twenty fifteen. So we have some summary graphics here. I'll go ahead and run through these pretty quickly. This is just a summary of twenty-four versus twenty-two ratings in a pie chart. Again, most were similar. And when we break it down by category, we can see some trends here. So to start off, looking at education, arts, and culture, that is the singular category that saw no decreases when comparing twenty-four versus twenty-two with several rating increases. And I believe that's the one that contains the special events, opportunities to participate, those sorts of questions. I'm looking at rating decreases. We saw several categories had more decreases than similarities, and that would be the economy, parks and recreation, health and wellness, along with governance and quality of life. But also, sorry, participation, how folks are getting more involved in the community, that also saw more, saw no decreases and saw several rating increases as well. And also, rating increases were found in overall quality. Those were those quality questions, so that's where public safety comes in. That was the only facet to increase since twenty twenty-two in quality. And also, we have a few mobility related questions that that increased, which includes public transit, that tends to be a pretty, pretty good strength of ours as as we move along here, so. So looking at twenty-four versus the three survey average, again, a summary pie chart, most ratings were similar at ninety-three. So turning our attention to national benchmarks. Again, when it comes to mobility, and I believe that is the public transportation question, we are higher than the national benchmark, and that's shown in the green in mobility. When it comes to areas in which we have more ratings lower than the national benchmark, I believe six, six out of fifteen rating comparisons, rating categories had that be the case, which I think with the most being concentrated in parks and recreation and also overall quality questions as well, those those had a large majority of of ratings that were lower than the national comparisons. Moving on to comparing BIPOC in white respondents. Again, most ratings were similar at seventy-six percent or three out of four questions roughly. When broken down by category, again, we see a majority of categories had more similarities than not, with most of the dissimilarities, if you will, concentrated in mobility, utilities, and participation. And we have the statistically accurate versus open participation results. So to give a bit of background on this, this is the second year that we've implemented an open participation portion of the survey. Essentially, it's a link that we've received from the researchers that we shared via our communications channels that allows anyone with a Lakewood zip code to take the same exact random or statistically accurate survey. So those two survey pools are kept separate, and we had a hundred and thirty-eight responses to the open participation survey. So when you, and so what this graph is comparing, how you would read it, is that, for example, looking at the green here, we had twelve ratings that were higher on the statistically accurate survey versus the open participation one. So it's kind of a flip, if you will. We had sixty-four ratings that were lower. And researchers have shown that when you open up the survey to everyone, you tend to get lower ratings, if you will, compared to the statistically accurate survey. And to give a bit more background, most of those ratings, the similar, most of the ratings that were higher of that green slice there were in the areas of governance. So dive into the equity insights here. There are five in total, so I'll run through them here. So Equity Insight One, BIPOC in white residents engage with the Lakewood community differently via civic life and interactions with the city government. Overall, BIPOC respondents rated feeling less engaged in civic life and less satisfied with city government than white respondents. So let's dive into a bit of data here. Looking at the left hand side when it comes to what I call civic life ratings, we have opportunities to volunteer. We had a forty-seven percent positive for BIPOC versus sixty-three percent white. Opportunities to attend cultural arts, music activities. BIPOC rated thirty percent versus forty percent, forty-seven percent for white respondents. When it comes to importance or sort of priorities, if you will, the city government should focus on opportunities for arts and culture events. Seventy-seven percent positive for BIPOC respondents versus sixty-six for white. And residents engagement in connections with the community, we have seventy-six percent for BIPOC respondents versus sixty-one percent. So we are seeing, at least according to the survey, that there is an opportunity for city events, city, more city event programming, if you will, with a focus on culture, music, and the arts. And and we're seeing that bear out, if you will, in the difference in importance between the two groups with BIPOC respondents rating more highly the importance of opportunities for arts and culture and engaging with the wider community. Looking at city government ratings, Lakewood government is welcoming West resident involvement. Forty percent for BIPOC versus fifty-two percent white. In treating residents with respect, we had forty percent BIPOC versus sixty-one percent. Of note, several rating gaps have closed that were present in twenty twenty-two, but this is due to BIPOC residents responding lower to them in twenty-four. For example, in treating all residents fairly, there was a twenty percent decrease in this rating for BIPOC respondents. Value of services for taxes paid, there was a nineteen percent decrease. And for being honest, there was a twenty-three percent decrease. So our rating gaps have closed since twenty twenty-two, it is because of these these drops.
Then just to make a comment on, and I don't recall the survey questions in front of me, but one might wonder whether before the question, opportunities to attend cultural arts, music activities. Whether before the question, opportunities to attend cultural arts music activities, that there was a question. Have you in the past twelve months attended any one of the following? Boom, ba-boom, 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 ba-boom. Do you think that the city should provide more opportunities to attend cultural arts and music activities? Similar to your answer to the previous question or something like that, because if one were to look. In my humble opinion, at all the cultural arts and music activities the city provides. It's huge. And they're all free. Can we do better? Sure, but that's just one example to me that where we might get better data by asking the question differently. Again, I'm just commenting, I know that the survey is what the survey is and your work was to provide the insights, and I appreciate that. I'm just browsing.
So moving on to Equity Insight Two, this dovetails. Interacts with the previous insights, is that communication between city government and BIPOC communities emerged as an area of improvement in twenty twenty-four. Whereas these ratings differences were not present in twenty-two. For example, BIPOC respondents were more likely to contact the city government, forty-six percent versus twenty-six percent. Yet rated public information services less, forty, forty percent versus fifty-two percent than white respondents. So with this insight, I think there's an opportunity, I didn't include these statistics, but. BIPOC respondents rated higher using social media and watching online meetings in my respondents. So perhaps utilizing those more internet-based communication channels is one way to address this discrepancy that was identified.
So just sort of an apple and oranges question. They asked. How likely, or or did you recently contact the city for information and and help with something? And that is the. Area that is. Forty-six percent versus twenty-six, so they were more likely to do that. But the second part says rated public information services. Doesn't say city information services, so was the question. I mean, I I frequently hear from a lot of people that. I ended up finally getting information from the city after I tried to get it from the county and the, and the, and, 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 and other people to be able to go and do that. So those are not necessarily. Both sides of that don't necessarily refer to the city.
Correct, the way the the second part is phrased in the survey is that rate the services in Lakewood. So it could indeed, does indeed include cities.
Everybody else.
You have county, state. So that, yeah, that is correct.
And I know you've got a few more equity insights, but let me just ask yourself two this year. One of our stated goals as a council was to really took at taking action. Where we identified issues of systemic racism. So what in the survey results point us at? Difference in how people responded to things, but what pointed us at? Something we should act on that is indicated of a continued presence of systemic racism in some area. Did you find that in your analysis?
I think what's interesting about this year's results is the emergent racial gaps compared to just even two years ago. We'll actually cover that in, I think, the next slide even. So to answer that question, there there are sort of areas in which government or, you know. In the case of Equity Insight Three, when it comes to utilities even, so. So this third insight is that utilities is an emerging discrepancy between BIPOC and white residents. In the areas of drinking water, electric gas service, yard waste pickup and utility billing. So these are all gaps that were not present even two years ago.
I have a hard time even understanding what that means. So does that mean they don't have access to clean drinking water? Do they have access to thorough and. Reliable electrical gas service or yard pickup, that kind of a thing? Without looking at the question, just looking at the insight, I don't know what that's telling me.
So how it's phrased in the survey is that to rate the following services. It does not get into, some questions do ask about, for example, affordability of a resource. But these specifically did not talk about access, if you will, simply to rate.
Just rating the services, their quality, satisfaction with the services.
It is a satisfaction.
Okay, I'm not following the survey questions along here, got it. Animal control is in there somewhere. Interesting, okay. Was kind of interesting because we're not a full-service city, so. It makes it challenging, right, on some of these, but it's informative, I get it. Yeah, that's data, Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, you know, you know, one of the challenges is interpreting the. Data is we're looking at the differences between BIPOC and white respondents. That. This, this particular slide is more understandable to me. If I was saying that I had a difference between low income and higher income respondents. And I'm thinking back when we met with the Water District Commissioners. And we talked about the the lack of fluoridation in the water system. This was a negative more to to low income folks who didn't have the capability. Or have the the dental insurance or the the way, way to be able to go and do that. I think, and and the same is true with things that we've heard about. A higher percentage of low income folks are. Renters and in in apartment buildings and that the trash system. That that exists in apartments and that is viewed as less. These are than those who are folks of single-family homeowners whose. Their individual trash is picked up on a specific day, but. A lot of low-income people have to take their trash to community or apartment collection points. That. That gather more trash in a week than is normally, normally picked up, but they have the same thing. So I I think that. You know, I, I, I understand this slide in that context. And that may be somewhat where that, that, that. And I don't know whether you got data for, were BIPOC respondents answering data about. Economic status, but I would expect that most of the BIPOC. Or some of the BIPOC respondents were maybe, or maybe more of the non-BIPOC respondents tended to be. Folks who were homeowners, you indicated, that, that, that goes on to do that. So I think, I think, I think it's, it's difficult to try to say. This, this is a real difference, but is the difference have to do with being BIPOC or having to do with economic status?
I think to add to that, Councilmember Brandstetter, there is overlap between economic status and race. And I believe I included in map A as an attachment in the appendix, sort of an overlay. It's my census tract and shows qualified census tracts, if you will, identified as having low, low-income communities. But also a breakdown of the census tracts by race and, you know, higher concentration of. Of white residents specifically, and there is overlap. To say that qualified census tracts do indeed tend to have more BIPOC population within Lakewood. Yeah, so there is an overlap there. So moving on to Equity Insight Four, this looks specifically at access. Affordability of childcare, healthcare, food and housing are growing challenges for Lakewood residents overall since twenty-two. Especially for BIPOC communities. And so we've seen emergent race gaps in several areas here to include availability of affordable quality healthcare. Health services in the city, availability of affordable quality housing and a variety of housing options. And moving on to the last insight, Equity Insight Five. So alternative transportation differences between BIPOC and white residents coupled with. Previous data we just saw in terms of access to resources point towards opportunities for affordable mixed-use development. I think these, what we've seen so far in terms of access to resources. But also what we see in the slide here as with alternative transportation trends, I think could really speak towards. Sort of the work we're doing with the downtown subarea plan, we're to concentrate resources in a downtown core. And also have active or alternative transportation-centric design, I think could really speak to a lot of issues we've seen tonight. Specifically for alternative transportation, there are some key differences here. We have ease of biking and carpooling were rated higher amongst BIPOC respondents, which may point towards that. Folks are using these alternative transportation methods more so. Because when we look at ease of public parking and traffic flow on major streets. We actually see that it's rated higher amongst. White respondents, if you will, which may point towards that BIPOC residents are using alternative transportation. Rather than a single occupancy motor vehicle than white respondents. So differences in alternative transportation.
This one, this one is kind of helpful with regard to the land use planning piece, right? Focused in the urban core where there's transportation resources and.
So I think I will go over. Think I'll skip to the recommendations portion, so the next slides are summaries of the ten facets of livability, if you will. So I'm happy to dive into any one of these areas. But I think I'm going to go over the recommendations here and and before opening up the floor to any more discussion here. So look at recommendations, if the city council were elected to stick with the NCS. Even if not, we should still look at continuing to focus on gaining more of those underrepresented voices. From districts two and three, which includes Springbrook, Woodbrook, Tillicum and International District. To ensure that BIPOC populations and also low-income populations are included with whatever survey we choose to move forward with. So. I think with that, I think that concludes my presentation.
That was there on the recommendations?
Well, that's it.
Okay, very good. Questions? Mr. Laura Self and then Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the survey went out, was there opportunity for more open-ended subjective questions? That people could sort of write essay responses to, if you will, to have more insight into thought processes? Or was it more? Objective, number-based?
It's, it's the latter. Folks only had the opportunity to fill in the bubble, if you will.
And then echoing what my fellow council members said. We should look at opportunities to better engage with our residents and. Have a strong communications plan to get out into those communities, whether it's doorbelling or. Or getting awareness to folks that this survey is available to them so we can have a better reach. And be very specific about the, the topics that are most critical to our residents so that we can do something actionable about it.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Laura Sella, the actual survey is on page two sixty-nine of our packet, if you want to go take a spin through. It's interesting. I just wanted to say I appreciate you taking us through all of this, a lot of information to decipher. I wish there was more results, you know, rather than, there's a lot of information to decipher, I just wish that we had more results. So I wanted to commend you for that and my negative comments were not directed at you. But rather just my frustration with the survey itself and maybe the folks that we worked on the survey with, so. But you did a great job, so I appreciate that. One other comment that I would leave is, you know, it seems like this survey gets sent out once a year or, sorry, one time every few years. You know, maybe if we could phase the survey at a few points in time throughout the year. You know, to to hit some target events like Summer Fest and these other things where there's a lot of people. Rather than just whatever day of the year we decide, that's the day that we get all of our results. And so that would just be, you know, again, thinking outside the box on how to collect more data better, so thank you.
Yeah. I only add my thought, I, I recognize and appreciate, you know, a lot of work of trying to find meaning. In, 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 in this survey and, and, and you found some, I mean, I mean, there, 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 there are clearly things to do that. It's. Somewhat like statistics, though. You can get statistics, if you torture them enough, they'll tell you what you want to hear. And I will also say that I, I got a lot of comments from people and it was. Mostly there were people that were taking the open survey, not the designated one, but but some of the others. That the methodology of getting to the end of the survey. And even though there was a statement at the beginning of the survey that said at the end we're going to ask you is. That when you got there to what they asked, there are a lot of people that then just didn't click the submit button. Okay, and in, in, in other words. They, they couldn't process the anonymity with having to. Do everything and while I didn't do that, and, and I think that it was. You know, it was not a few, it was dozens of people that made that comment to me that they, that they didn't do it. I, I think that the, the earlier comment about. Ten years ago, we, we started in on this surveying sequence, okay, and we adopted a. Off-the-shelf survey that measures the same things that. Were being measured all over the country, okay, in terms of being able to go and do that. I think after four surveys that I'm sort of at the conclusion that. We were not asking what we really want to know ourselves. We, we. I know that we and our employees in the city and the volunteers on all of our advisory boards. Are, are, are very serious about wanting to meet the expectations of the community. And wanting to interact and hear from them. And. So I think that. As we come up on. Our vision sunsetting and needing to extend our vision forward. And we look at what are the things that are important to us because we put them in that revised vision. That then we should look at surveying those points and they. The, the process may be that we hit folks that come to meetings and that. When there's a issue that they're. when there's a issue that they're focused on. In other words, if we did a, if we did a, if we were concerned about climate and we said we were going to have things to do that, people people, people who are thinking about that and have thoughts to share, come to those. I I think they 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 would on public safety. I think a a survey that tries to evaluate all of those things that we want feedback on all at once. And you you know, you 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 lose some of the people because they 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 don't see see the focus. Um, and so um, you know, we'll um, I I think that we we should, as we perhaps at our retreat or going on, we should decide upon our community survey asks and being able to go and do that. And I think that we don't need to ask a hundred and forty-four questions to people.
Right.
We 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 can ask a group of questions about public safety and we can ask a group of questions about how does, how do you feel and 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 how how are you treated when you when you interact at with the with the with the city employees? We can come up with that. Um, and I think that, you know, it's not that something that we need to hire a consultant to do because a consultant will give us what a whole bunch of other people are. It's kind of like back when we did the vision statement and we s- spent a year having a consultant design a vision, which we then threw out and designed and 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 worked on ourselves. Um, so um, I I think um, you know, um it's 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 um the the opinions of four hundred and sixteen residents. I again, I agree with you, so it doesn't move, it doesn't move the 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 needle very much. It it doesn't, I didn't find a lot of actionable uh items here. There are a few items here that I think because we're not a full-service city, we should share with the 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 entities that that maybe those few few areas uh uh are in terms of the public transportation partners and our utility partners and 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 some others. But um, you know, I I I think that it's 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 time to turn the page and and go to a new strategy of not something that's easy to buy, but that is going to be, get us something that is going to be meaningful to us.
Agreed. I even dovetailing on that, w- we could turn to our our advisory boards and commissions and have them, based on their work plan, the significant work they're doing, come up with four or five significant questions that would assist them in getting the feedback for the work plan, which flows from council's goals and objectives, which flows from the vision, right? I think that would be a better way to do it and we could do it ourselves. I would throw this in the round can, you know, and not deal with NCS again. Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with my council fellow council members. I don't want to completely disregard hearing those four hundred and sixteen people, though.
Right.
So I do feel like it's important to have some takeaways from this survey itself. But I also agree with Councilmember Branstad, I think these are questions that we could come up with. Um, and I know that there's plenty of tools that you know about that we could utilize to make this happen. Um, but I also would like to see some sort of um outreach plan that goes with when we do our next survey, how we're going to outreach, what what our outreach is going to be, who we're gonna um send things to, where we're going to be, different places, things like that, just something that's solidified so we can see as a plan, okay, this is what's gonna happen, this is the timeline. I think that could be really beneficial to help us um process this and to get more returns because, like I said, the sample size is so small, but at the same time, it was a sample size that of people that did return and people in Lakewood that spoke. So again, I don't want to completely disregard everything, but I feel the data points are minimal at best. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey has a hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I mean, I hard for me to to glean a lot out of this, but I although but before we before we rush to throw this out, I would I would note that the strength of this survey is that it it gives us some, hopefully it's statistically significant. Remember, remember, they do presidential polling for the entire country with just a couple of thousand people. Um, if you did a poll of the government, uh of of a governor's race this fall, they're they're, they might do a thousand people. So it's it's not that the question is 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 it statistically significant? So I, you know, I that, I don't know what I read into this, I think it was difficult just because of the sheer number of questions. But if you don't have consistency of questioning, you can't see trends. And so that's what in a rush to kind of go it alone, I would just note that you you're not looking for trends, then you're loo- you're looking for answers for certain things. And then there's always the problem of bias and sampling, so and even how you even ask the questions. So it's a different sort of, and I don't disagree with that, of of trying to figure out much more precisely what are the issues here? Um, especially when it comes to public safety, for instance, because we, I mean, we, it's our biggest single item, yet these four hundred and something people rated it pretty poorly. And um, that's that's a concern or should be a concern for us. So maybe we need to do more questioning in that area on our own as to what do you mean when you when you rate it so low? Because we we think we've been doing great, right? So um, and we spent a lot of money on it, so what's what's the issue? But I I would just note that what we're talking about trying to do on our own is very, very different than the community survey. It really isn't a community survey, it may not be statistically significant. And um, it it it's more for informational purposes to help us get to to try to dig in. And so I don't, I don't disagree with a a new set of questions, but I think the set of questions needs to piggyback onto what the information that we have here. We shouldn't dismiss the uh, the uh, some of the issues that were brought up here in this survey. I was concerned about about several of them. Um, and I and I think we do need to dig in more and maybe we need more questions based on those. But I would use this as a tool.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else feel good to the order? Well, thank you, Mr. Vargas, again, appreciate the feedback and the insights you gleaned from it. And look forward to kind of honing in on what we can do to make the most of the information received.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, we've got the proposed ordinance amending the Central Business District residential target area boundary. And for this, I'll call on our economic development manager, Becky Newton.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Members of Council. So this evening, uh we are reviewing the Central Business District residential target area for expansion within the multifamily tax exemption program. So last November of twenty twenty-three, City Council adopted Ordinance seven nine two, which updated Lakewood Municipal Code to align with uh State RCW eighty-four fourteen uh for new and rehabilitated rehabilitated multifamily dwellings in urban centers. And the Lakewood Municipal Code Title Three Re- Revenue and Finance Chip, Chapter three point six four is the multifamily tax exemption, which was originally adopted in twenty two thousand two. So last year, uh there was discussion around expanding the Central Business District residential target area. However, uh City Council wanted more time and discussion for consideration and to bring back uh this before the Planning Commission quarter one of twenty twenty-four. So Planning Commission was provided uh with an overview of the program on February seventh. They have four new members, and so we went over that in detail. The overview is included in your packet this evening, uh beginning on page three oh nine. It includes the program, um the fact that it's an economic development tool, as well as providing for affordable housing. It also includes information on the projects in Lakewood as well as photos of the four projects that currently have MFTEs in place. So on page three eighteen um is a draft ordinance for your consideration if you choose to expand the Central Business District residential target area. And then on page three twenty-one is the proposed map. And if you look on that page, uh we're simply expanding the pink areas of that map of the Central Business District residential target area, which is simply the western boundary of the downtown subarea.
So it doesn't expand the subarea, it just conforms to it.
Correct. No, there are no zoning changes, it just simply expands the multifamily tax exemption tool area. And then on uh page three twenty-four is the Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty-four oh two recommending the expansion of the Central Business District residential target area. So why are we reviewing this map only? Uh, there is a high potential to attract additional projects to this designated expansion area. The Central Business District has the highest need for residential and commercial development per our subarea plan for the downtown. It's a regional center for growth. It does not change the zoning, as I mentioned, it's already zoned for the uses. And it just simply incentivizes um development as prescribed in the downtown plan. There will be a public hearing held on Monday, next next Monday, April first, on this topic. Um, I will also just briefly go over some of the uh Planning Commission comments. They they are in favor of uh pushing for additional residential target areas at some point in time and expanding uh future growth, particularly in the downtown area. They are not opposed to the multifamily um expansion. Uh, they did mention or bring up, there wasn't a lot of public comment in the public hearing. Uh, they are in favor of larger projects due to the same amount of administrative work done by staff, whether it's a smaller project or a larger project in general. Um, also, um, they wanted to look at the condition of the current MFTE projects, which is why I included photos within the packet for them to look at and and for you as well. They did recognize that there's an overabundance of households that are struggling now. Uh, they are very mindful of displacement and sus- sensitive to distribution of incomes. And also uh want to make sure that we in uh consider the intent of the program for future expansions of of different areas within uh the city of Lakewood. And uh, I did want to mention as well that the commission did hold a public hearing on February twenty-first, which was extended to through March sixth to allow for additional comment. And they did uh receive two public comments. Uh with that, I will um end my presentation and take any comments and questions.
I I have two quick questions and I'll open it up.
Yes.
When you said there wasn't a lot of public comment before the Planning Commission, I guess it begs the question, is there a better way in this process to notify the public as to why they might want to be engaged, like postcards? I know we do that for land use type things, we post the poster and those kinds of things. Is there a better way to have engaged the public?
I, yeah, I'm certainly, I I'm certainly that we're open to different ways to communicate. Uh, per statute, we're required to noti- notice in our uh local newspaper
Right.
as well as post on our website. But there's certainly opportunity for more communication.
Got it, okay. And then on the MFTE, as I recall, one of the ordinances we passed earlier this year, it took the approval of the specific MFTE application out of the purview of council and put it in the administrative side of the house, isn't that right?
That's correct, the approval is through the Community and Economic Development Director.
Right.
However, um, we do have an intention to bring back information on all projects to City Council.
Got it. And the only reason I raise that is because we went through a lot of work in the Central Business District Subarea Plan on Design Standards. And there was one MFTE project that came before us that we pushed back on uh because of its design. It was a little bit more plain than we thought would be appropriate in the Central Business District, given the benefit of the multifamily tax exemption. Isn't that right? We did that.
That's correct.
Because I look at the photographs you provided and there are a a couple in there to me that again, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so uh my comments are just my own comments. But there are a couple of projects in there that that look a little less aesthetically robust than two of the others. Uh, and so, you know, food for thought there as we have projects. As we expand the RTA, we we will want to incentivize good development, but we want to incentivize attractive development in structures that are going to sustain, uh, you know, quality look, even if it's moderate to low-income housing, we want it to look like a quality product. And I'm not saying either one of these four are not, I'm just articulating there are a couple that are looking a little bit more aesthetically desirable to me than perhaps the other two might be in the Central Business District.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's my two cents. Anyone else, questions for Ms. Newton? Mr. Branstad.
Ms. Newton, um what were the parameters that were used to establish the expansion area? It goes there, I mean, it it the two expansion areas, there are two separate areas that that it's recommended to establish that. Uh, what 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 was the criteria that was used to identify th- those groupings of properties? As opposed to maybe another smaller grouping of property that isn't necessarily adjacent to the existing RTA?
Thank you, Councilmember Branstad. Or yes, we wanted to ensure that we're um essentially matching the downtown subarea, which is, as I mentioned, the Regional Growth Center. Uh, the previous map did not, we are simply looking um down the western boundary um along the downtown subarea for the Central Business District. And the small pink area just uh essentially um brings the boundary over to match the the subarea plan. And then uh as well, the the larger pink area extending to the south along Gravelly Lake also extends that to the western boundary.
When in in twenty eighteen, when we approved the downtown subarea plan, there was a great deal of discussion about these particular properties because they were um in the area of where they were, the transition between residential neighborhoods and the downtown. And so the uh part of the downtown plan said they're going to limit the height in those properties so to 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 so that they that that they that they weren't creating walls between the residential areas and the downtown. Now, we start to change and we want to prioritize them being places where there'll be multifamily development. And our uh, the reality is, is that if we're going to meet this twenty-eight hundred or three thousand new housing units in the downtown, they really have to be done with tall buildings. they really have to be done with tall buildings. I mean, these are not big, big properties being able to go and do that. And so, so I'm concerned that we excluded areas from having that kind of development when we developed the plan because we said it'd be developed commercially but not tall. And we didn't want to do that. The other thing that I'm concerned with is if we greatly expand where the multifamily tax exemption is going to be inside the downtown area. And there is plenty of space within the existing R T A for multifamily development that would get us to our targets of the number of new housing area, housing units that we want to have there to do that. The challenge has been, how do we yet, we envision them being, getting to there with those units also being mixed use, so that we can meet our goals for increased retail space and retail's commercial space. If we start to incentivize over retail and commercial space, more areas for multifamily development, we're liable to get multifamily development, but we're going to use up space that we'd wanted to be able to go and do that. So and I would like to say that if we're going to use land in the downtown area, then we ought to make sure that a multifamily tax exemption goes to something that's going to provide a significant density of housing. And so if we were to approve an R T A expansion, I would think that we should also say that instead of, we'll approve projects of fifteen units, we should say that we want projects of at least fifty units to be able to go into it, or define density based on the size of the lot, the parcel, rather than just use the basic, it's got to be fifteen, at least fifteen units to be able to go and do that. Because otherwise, we're going to be encouraging development that won't get us to where we want to be to be able to go and do that. So I guess my question would be, could changing that in the downtown area, because the last time we adjusted the multifamily tax exemption ordinance, we put some unique requirements for the downtown R T A that were different from the other two R T As. We, for instance, we said it had something to do with, they can only exist for a certain period of time. They weren't as eligible for for longer periods of time than than the ones in the station district or in Springbrook. So could we, in conjunction with this expansion of the R T A, also say that in the downtown R T A that we want to look at, not fifteen minimum, but 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 fifty or some other designation of density? Or even saying that we'll consider multifamily tax exemptions if the unit is, if the development has one floor of mixed use, which would be encouraging both and would be moving towards our combined goals of jobs, retail and commercial activity in housing that we want to make, because once you build a multifamily development, it's going to be there for the duration of the horizon that we had, that the downtown sub area plan envisioned, you know, which is still, you know, a couple of decades to be able to go and do that. So I worry to do this so that in the short term, we're going to get some housing development, but I worry that it would be, it will be too small and that it will displace places of where commercial and mixed use development could be when there is plenty of space already in the R T A to build housing. I don't think we need to spot select some parcels that somebody said they'd be interested in in doing something. I think we should stick with saying, let's get the development where we envisioned it wanting, wanting it to be in the downtown area plan. And, you know, and despite the fact that we've got to work with the owners of the Q F C, and we've got some some properties that have recently been rehabilitated from contamination to do that. I think that just doing this one action, we may we may end up getting what we ask for and then not getting the overall result that we want to from the downtown area in terms of the complete package of jobs, commercial activity and housing.
Let me ask Ms. Newton some questions based on your comments, just so that we can flesh this out a little bit. So and then I'll open it up. Just to be clear, that whether or not the proposed expansion area for the R T A in the pink on page three twenty one occurs or not, it's still zoned for multifamily in that area of the central business district?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. Doesn't change the zoning.
Right. So the next question is, with regard to the sub area plan, if one were to do a multifamily project without the M F T E in the pink area, do they not still have to do some mixed use within the sub area plan, the central business district or not?
Per the sub area plan, there's a mixed use component required.
So it's already required? Whether it's in the R T A or not?
This, the M F T E is simply a tool
Right.
to help encourage the development to move forward.
And the other concern, if it's in the sub area plan as adopted by council, that the area in pink, for instance, that particular area had to have, if it was commercial or multifamily, it couldn't be too tall because of its proximity to the residential neighborhood. I assume that wouldn't change with the expansion of the R T A?
That is correct.
That policy does not change?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Let me just clarify, are you, I thought I heard you say that anyone who's building a multifamily development in the downtown sub area plan has to incorporate mixed use elements?
Per our sub area plan, if they're on a mixed use street, then the the development has to include a component of mixed use.
If they're on a mixed use street?
Correct. There's different areas within the sub area.
The map that you showed us, could you remind me what the mixed use streets are?
Well, I don't have that. Yeah, Mr. Brandstetter, I'd be happy to provide that for you. I don't have that in front of me this evening.
Okay, because I was wondering, as I, because I, I think Gravelly Lake Drive is a mixed use street, but I didn't think one hundred and twelfth street was. Okay, and there are some of the parcels that are on one hundred and twelve that are on this.
Yes, whatever the, whatever the sub area plan has currently will not change in terms of those requirements. This just expands the R T A boundary within the sub area.
And then some of the, some of the properties, the farthest north, are not on Gravelly Lake. They are, they are actually on probably Whitman. You know, the five parcels that are there, so they're not on a mixed use street. And then there are some. So I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking that. And then, and then the, so so that then Main Street is not a mixed use street? And I'm thinking about the Alliance project, okay? Because it has no mixed use components, so it's not on a, I mean, the closest public street is Main Street. Okay, yeah, but but we're looking at design plans that include no mixed use elements, although it's a good project and it's got plenty of density and it's good, and it's got a good percentage of of senior housing. And if it comes in for a multifamily tax exemption, it will add into some affordability in terms of a sizable thing. And it gets us to about fifteen percent of our goal for housing units in the in the downtown area. So I think it's a, it's a good project, but it's an example of a project without mixed use, if too many of them will spell disaster for the remain, other elements of the downtown area plan goals.
And I raise that question myself, Mr. Brandstetter, I agree with you. I would prefer personally that it had mixed use. I kind of thought it did or was supposed to. But as I understand the sub area plan, because it's actually in the town center, that is the retail component. For that housing project.
Kind of. So under our code, you, it's required to have a minimum of ten acres in order to do a master plan. And so in this particular case, referring to the Alliance Residential Project, they are utilizing ten, over ten acres of space, so they have more flexibility. And so you can make a case for, because the project is in with, within a retail center, there is a lot of retail that exists. So it obviously ultimately will be up to the hearing examiner. And we're, we've seen a lot of comment on this project and we're listening to folks just to make sure that we do do the right thing. But it is a beautiful project, and so we're moving forward and through that process.
Appreciate the reminder. Sometimes it's good, it's been a few years, it would be almost be good to get a primer, you know, on a little bit, but that does address the question. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Newton?
Mayor, you have Councilmember Bokey online as well.
Oh, and there, Mr. Bokey. So Mr. Pearson and Mr. Bokey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Newton, so looking at the current and proposed Lakewood projects, there's nine projects since two thousand and six that have used this M F T E, it looks like. Is that correct? So it's not, and I mean, I guess you could say it's been picking up pace in the past three years, maybe, but it's not like this is being widely used by any means. And then, you know, when we, when we talk about the size of a project, I, I do agree with with Mr. Brandstetter in the sense that we do want to get some sort of a sizable project, but I would be hesitant to change it to a parcel density type of situation just because you could end up with smaller parcels being developed in a different way. And so I think the idea is that if they can chain parcels together, we want to just stick to a units measurement. And I think when I was on the planning commission, this, the units got brought up and I, I don't know if it's changed. I thought that it used to be even less than fifteen and it was
Four, yes.
Yeah, it was four.
Councilmember Pearson, it was four and it's been raised to fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah. So that's what we, on the planning commission at the time, thought was at least a, you know, a somewhat sizable project. And so, you know, this isn't, this hasn't been used widely in the past, and it's been a lot smaller, lot few, less density. So, you know, we do want to balance encouraging development and getting thoughtful development with just getting development period. And so I'd be hesitant to increase the size of the projects to much more than this fifteen unit threshold here. So that's my comments here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I went to several of the planning commission meetings where they discussed this. In, you know, and it's really, there was a lot of robust discussion, but a lot of the things that are occurring here tonight occurred there also. It became, you know, a lot of concern about the future use of the library property. There, you know, and and there was actually a split vote on this at final. I believe it was five to two in in favor of the map change. But we are just voting tonight to match the the M F T area with the, with the downtown sub area plan map. And that's, and that's what they ended up voting on. I do believe that Mr. Brandstetter has made some good, good points tonight. I think that, I don't know that fifteen i- is high enough. I think that what I'm looking for is we want professionally managed projects, not when they're built, but thirty years from now. And I think that people in Lakewood are very concerned, and I think the places that cause us a lot of angst are places that were built a long, long time ago, thirty, forty years ago, and and are not professionally managed. And they're not big enough to be professionally managed. And so it's difficult for our staff to work with them. And so I, I think, and this is one of the things I hope that we would talk about Saturday at our retreat when we talk about the comprehensive plan. I think we need to have a discussion and we need to take seriously the comments that people are making. I mean, their concerns that, that in, to some respect, I do share about the continual loss of retail. Now, I get it, the retail nationally is going through a lot of change. But I, but I think that we've talked about heights, you know, we've even talked about minimum heights in the future rather than the three story or two or three story apartments that there's so many of, because I just don't think we're going to get the densities that that we need to get to get the numbers that we're going to get. And I think the downtown plan has been a good plan for residential. It is meeting its residential targets. The question going forward is, is it going to be mixed use, which was our dream? And and now I'm beginning to foresee a day when it maybe isn't going to be mixed use. So I think we need to have a robust discussion around that. I'm hoping we have that on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. All good comments. Any others? Would you go to the order? Any final thoughts, Ms. Newton?
Thank you very much.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes the items for tonight's discussion during the study session. Those items tentatively scheduled for the April first regular city council meeting are before you on your outline of the agenda tonight. So now we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, just a few updates. First, I'd like to thank and recognize our economic development direct manager, Becky Newton. For the last month, she's been serving as interim director for the community and economic development department and did an outstanding job there, not just leading the department as a whole, but also continuing on her own day job, including this particular item and our tax increment financing strategy, which is going to be coming forward to this body here early, early, early next month. So just again, wanted to thank and recognize her for that. Police chief Patrick Smith asked me to pass on to you that L P D will begin advertising for the two thousand and twenty four L P D Citizens Academy, and that's going to kick off the week of April eighth and will accept applications through May sixth, so about a month or so there. The class will be, as in past years, limited to twenty attendees. And of course, priority will be given first and foremost to City of Lakewood residents. The academy itself will start on June eleventh. It'll be every Tuesday evening for eight weeks from six thirty P M to nine P M. There's going to be a couple of Saturday classes, one for evac training, emergency vehicle operations, and the other for virtual reality use of force scenarios. But those dates are to be determined. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then the other, as we close out March, just a couple of items, this Wednesday. Um, and then the other, um, as we close out March, um, just a um, couple of items, uh, this Wednesday afternoon. Um, actually, I think it's a, well, Wednesday morning is the civilian hall of fame of where our deputy mayor is going to be recognized as well as our SSMCP program manager, Bill Adamson, for those of you who will be attending that. And then on, later on in the afternoon, Community Healthcare is having their annual lunch and laughter um event at the um bicentennial pavilion at Hotel Murano in Tacoma. And then further later that evening, um, the mayor will be hosting his coffee house event at the Fort Stilliken Park Pavilion and the topic that evening will be uh special, special events. And then, of course, Saturday is your city council retreat right here in the council chambers. And um, I'll just point out, I will hold off on your April calendar. We'll send that out to you. Um, it's probably one of your busiest months in terms of all the activity and events that are going on. So I'll um hold a pause on that until until next week. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Coffield? Any dates or issues? Very good. All right. Well, let's turn to council comments and Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really a lot of really good information tonight. And so I wanted to say thank you to the staff for presenting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last week I went to the student voice on fentanyl awareness private screening. Uh, school district put on partner with the health department, I guess, or at least funded through the health department. And that was really, really great to see a bunch of, bunch of great young folks out there. And really was intense. Um, if you, if you watch it, the school district's going to show or share it. They have a Q QR code and I think they're going to share it on their socials. So I really encourage you to to go watch that and um spread the word, share it. They wanted to see you know, how many people it could touch. And so it was just really impactful seeing youth speaking to youth on important topics um like that. So that was, that was really moving. Um, I also went to the EDB luncheon last week and that was my first time going to that. So that was, that was nice to see um really good projects in all of Pierce County. But uh, yeah, it was just, just great to to be there and then see some of the, some of the top ten projects uh from the county and what they're doing, um, you know, to help encourage workforce uh coming up through our our youth. Um, this week I've got P Rab tomorrow and um there's a sound regional council on Thursday and then the retreat on uh Saturday. So busy, busy couple of weeks here.
Thanks. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo what other members of council said and thank our presenters tonight. Uh, on the human services strategy front, uh, as I mentioned, I'll be at the Pierce County opioid abatement, opioid abatement council meeting on Thursday. Uh, and Lakewood is leading by example and we have a plan, which I appreciate. Uh, I was excited to hear that Lhasa is fully funded and Habitat's helping more residents as well in our community. Uh, and then on the survey results, again, I wanted to thank Mr. Vargas for presenting. Uh, it's not easy content to get through, uh, but I also want to thank all of our residents for making their voices heard uh, and let them know that we did hear their responses and we will use that to drive action. And that is it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Bokey. Up in the window.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, we just had the PCRC meeting. We had that vote on transportation programs and uh, the the, it was major regional projects. We approved those and those go go off to the PSRC. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I am looking forward to the retreat on on Saturday. Uh, I I was glad to see that it is the time was extended a little bit so that I think we'll have some time to have some 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 meaningful discussions and 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 lay the groundwork for some future discussions to be able to go through and do that. I did uh, attend the student voice presentation and then I I I did go to the 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 health department's opioid council uh, or annual meeting in 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 Pualup, being able to go and do that. I think um, I I certainly came uh away from the student voice piece in encouraged that, uh, you know, yeah, that 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 were we're not a group of knights tilting at windmills, but there are other people in this in this game that are that are acting to do that. And that that project was uh uh, I think will be impactful. I think it will go on. I think that it's probably something that ought to ought to get some legs. But it wasn't expensive. It was a a five thousand dollar grant uh, from uh, from 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 the health department to the to to the school district with students to do that and was professionally done. And I think it's something that I certainly hope is can be repetitive as the, as 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 the problem is going to persist. Hopefully persists with progress being made, but still, still still persists going on. Um, as you have young people who are going to move through the the sequence of ages where they're susceptible to the 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 pressures of that. Um, I think the health department's uh annual report was good and they and they and they looked at it. I I I they were the health department, so 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 they had a narrow focus and they were really very focused on how do we help people who have already gotten themselves in trouble? Um, and uh, and and there was, and and there was some mention of prevention, but not a lot of of emphasis on 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 preventative type work, being able to go and do that. And so I was encouraged by our community services people that say, you know, they want to be deliberate to find out what is it that Lakewood really needs as opposed to dealing with broader data from elsewhere to do that. On our public outreach elements, yeah, I noted that we put out today the notice for the public briefings, they were called, briefings for people to be able to comment on our uh, plan to establish a tax increment financing area. And so we've invited the public to 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 comment, but we've said you can come at one PM on a Tuesday or three PM on a Thursday. Uh, and and they're actually virtual. I mean, I'm I'm not quite sure who our target audience that we want feedback in, or since this is a public briefing, not a hearing, it's a come out of a two-way conversation of 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 who we want to educate about the tax increment financing piece to do that. But it strikes me that that combination of a Tuesday and a Thursday, both in the same week, in the middle of the afternoon is not going to be the time that gets us a broad response to be able to go, 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 go and do that. That um
It's also via Zoom, it looks like.
Pardon?
It's also via Zoom, so they don't have to physically come here, but yeah.
And in fact, in fact, you have to do it on Zoom. There's not even, there's not a physical location. It's only a a Zoom location. As I read the 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 public notice, so uh, it goes on and on. But and all in all, there are successes happening all the time and my I and 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 I think though I'm not going to make it, I think we've got the the upcoming induction of our of of folks into the JBLM Hall of Fame and like congratulations to them and because I won't be able to be at the 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 breakfast or the event that 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 takes place at.
Well, Deputy Mayor Moss, I assume you're next and you you will attend the breakfast.
I do plan to attend. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the award ceremony also on um Monday this week. Um, and they've changed it. In in the past, it has been an evening gala, not gala, but a formal. But they have it in the afternoon now because they get more participation.
Good.
So they had a great turnout at Hang of Three and they have a huge deployment coming up. So a lot of the guys are going to be leaving. And I did attend the EDB luncheon. That was interesting. Good to see a lot of people that I hadn't seen for a long time. So it's a great event. And I will be at the induction ceremony. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll start by echoing the thoughtful comments on praise to the staff for job well done tonight, including the human services work with Ms. Bennett and and Mr. Gum. And certainly with Mr. Vargas on the survey work, you know, I I hope that our at times pointed questions don't diminish the value of the work that they provided. I I hope they know that because and for the four hundred and thirteen voices that did complete the survey, we don't want to diminish their voices either. We are just hopeful for more voices in the mix because more voices leads to better public policy. In terms of events, I did attend the opioid task force conference with Councilmember Branstad and uh, Ms. Bennett this week. It was quite good. It was well done, as Mr. Branstad indicated. It was focused a little bit on dealing with those uh who are suffering from addiction and figuring out ways to you know, from a regional approach, uh, maybe de-stigmatize so that people can get the help that they need. And that was kind of an interesting a piece of the work during the conferences, how to kind of really reorient the conversation, the language, so that we can actually de-stigmatize the mental health issues and the addiction issues that people are suffering from in order to help more people. So that was a a good point of the work. Later that evening, the student voice on fentanyl awareness, as you've all indicated who were there, it was really well done, great use of the resources and fantastic utilization of student voice for student help. Uh, speaking of students, on Saturday, Pierce County sponsored the YMCA uh state championship for the mock trial. And several lawyers in our area were down there, including myself to judge. And it was amazing to see students from around the state so poised, so articulate and great advocacy skills exhibited. Sponsored by Pierce County and it was a, you know, from an economic development thing, it's great to have three hundred and fifty some odd kids and all their families and all their coaches and all the attendant members of the audience coming to watch downtown. So that was a really well-done event. I will attend the civilian hall of fame breakfast on Wednesday. Good to see you, Deputy Mayor. And I hope you'll come later on to the coffee house. I'll make mention of your honor if you show up to the coffee house to encourage public participation. And if not, then I'll see you at the retreat on Saturday. How's that? Yes, I'm sure. Okay, well, that's it that I have.